Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the December 14th Open Space Board of Trustees meeting. And start the meeting by taking attendance. John Carroll?
Present.
Caroline.
Caroline Miller, present.
Dave Quince?
Here.
And I'm Karen Bulwark, the Chair of the Open Space Board of Trustees. Our first item of business is to approve the minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the November 9th meeting?
I assume.
Second? Oh, second. Does anyone have any revisions for the minutes? If not, can we let hand raise or we're doing voice, voice, please, voice vote? Okay, voice vote. John?
Yes.
Caroline? I wasn't present for the meeting, so I'll recuse myself.
Dave?
Yes.
And Karen? I vote yes. Okay. Allison, would you please start the rules and regulations for public comment for items that are not on the agenda?
The city has engaged with community members to co-create a vision for productive, meaningful, and inclusive civic conversations. This vision supports physical and emotional safety for community members, staff, and council and board members, as well as democracy for people of all ages, identities, lived experiences, and political perspectives. For more information about this vision, you can visit the city's webpage on Productive Atmospheres. The following are examples of rules as found in the Boulder Revised Code and other guidelines that support this vision. These will be upheld during this meeting. All remarks and testimony shall be limited to matters related to city business. No participant shall make threats or use other forms of intimidation against any person. obscenity, racial epithets, and other speech and behavior that disrupts or otherwise impedes the ability to conduct the meeting are prohibited. And participants are required to sign to speak using the name they are commonly known by. And individuals must display their whole name before being allowed to speak online. Currently, only audio testimony is permitted online. And when we get to public comment and public hearing, if you want to raise your hand to speak, you can find that in the Participants box under those three little dots, the Raise Hand option, or sometimes you can find it in your Reactions icon. And we'll repeat that again when we get to the public hearing tonight.
Great. And I think there are three people who have signed up for public comment, is that right?
Four have signed up ahead of time. Do you want to do? Are we doing this now?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have four for public comments. We'll start with Gino.
And Allison, would you mind just reading that full list of names, just so folks know who's made it on the list?
Yeah, for the public hearing. Okay, so I'll read everyone who has signed up tonight, so everyone knows their order that we have you for now. And then anyone who didn't sign up in advance can raise their hands later. But for open comment, we have Gino, Brady, Jeff, and Catherine. For e-bikes, we have Neil, David, Jean, Gary, Wendy, Rachel, Marky, Joe, Robert, Peter, Sally, Chuck, Andrew, Kathleen, Twig, Lorraine, Richard, Marcus, Catherine, and Jeff. So you know your order, when you might be going, and we'll give you the chance to raise your hand if you were on that list. What I'm looking for, Gino, I can't read my own writing, Za, Za, Zahind, and not seeing. Gino Brady. And Brady. Jeff. Jeff Curry. There's Jeff. Okay, we'll start with Jeff. And Jeff, can you start with your first name and I'll start the timer?
And you have three minutes to speak, is that right?
Yes, my name is Jeff Curry. Thank you for clarifying how much time I have. I was wondering. So just a little bit about me. I've been in Boulder for 23 years now. I was a commuter, a sponsored road and mountain bike racer. I'm now 56 years old, slowing down a little bit. But I really, when I first moved here, expected single-track mountain bike access to be right out my front door for 95% of us, we realized that's not the case. These mountain bike trails are really precious for those of us that use them. In the last two years, I've started riding an electric mountain bike. And I have to say, I've never been more excited about cycling than in the 30 years prior. It's the most blissful, customizable experience, I think, you can have on two wheels. I'm not surprised by the strong views on this topic. Clearly, there's a lot of ways one can look at what is a motorized vehicle on places that have historically been prohibitive. But I am a strong proponent of alternative A. And so most everything I'm about to say is in regards to Class 1 e-bikes only. That's such an integral part of understanding this validity of why these vehicles should be allowed off-road. And I think there's still confusion about that, as much as we try to clarify it. But I think as a once-hardcore rider, I know the ego damage that comes from someone you believe to be an inferior rider passing you. As a nature lover and a hiker, I take tremendous offense to the bad behavior of others, whether it's in person or the signs they leave of their presence. And I've spent a fair amount of time trying to understand all aspects of the anti-e-bike argument. And like I said, I know this is an emotional topic, and I hope we can all listen to each other. But I think facts really make a difference here in terms of do what we do and what we don't do. And I think your report was great, the biggest areas, speed, conflict, trail impact. You know, Dave Wiens, the President of IMBA, has said that there really isn't a big difference in the speed of electric mountain bikers versus traditional mountain bikers. And again, I'm talking on single-track trails. The conflict that's been revealed by the Jefferson County opening up their trails, all trails are now available to electric mountain bikes. There's very little conflict there. But hikers will take offense to bikers almost as a rule. And it's hard for me to separate my experience as an electric biker from a conventional biker. And impact from a physics standpoint, there's really nothing to say that this bike can do any more damage than a regular bike. So it's really about usage. Do we want more people using the trails or not? I think that really Boulder is a progressive place, an open-minded place, known nationwide as such. I would hope we wouldn't be laggards in adopting this, knowing that the facts really don't support.
Your time is up.
I see that. Sorry, I was going to use five more seconds.
And if there's anybody else who has public comment on e-bikes, that public hearing won't start for another 15 minutes or so. This is only public comment on items that are not on the agenda for a public hearing.
But I mean, Jeff's.
Just for clarity, but thank you for your comment, Jeff.
Sure, sure.
Okay, next up, we have Catherine Harris. Okay, Catherine, if you can start with your first name and last name, and I'll start the timer.
I'm Catherine Harris. And first of all, I would request somebody call my husband, Dick Harris, because he's having trouble logging in. So that's 303-499-1551. And I was signed up for this part of the hearing by mistake. But one of my.
Are you wanting to speak on e-bikes, Catherine?
Not yet. I'll speak again on e-bikes. This is about timing of some of these important issues. It just seems like at holiday time is when a lot of city committees do their really important business on some really controversial issues. And it just makes me wonder if the city really wants to hear citizen input, because this is a busy time, and I don't think as many people might offer their opinions as they would during the rest of the year. So that's what I have to say for this part of the hearing.
Thank you, Catherine.
Okay, I don't see Gino or Brady in the list.
If either Gino or Brady are in the meeting, would you please, by chat or by Q and A, which would you?
Oh, I have to see. Yeah, Q and A, if they can send me a.
Send. Send Allison a message in the Q and A at the bottom of your screen, please.
And we still will have the option to sign up to speak during the public hearing, even if you didn't sign up in advance to hear any questions.
Okay, if you want to speak during the public hearing on e-bikes at about 6:30, you should include your name in the Q and A and tell Allison that you would like to speak on e-bikes, so that we know that you're in the line for speaking during that public hearing. Okay, at this point, I'm going to close the public hearing for open comments and move to matters from the board. The first matter, first item under Matters from the Board is whether there are any questions or comments about the Boulder to Erie Regional Trail Master Plan Update that was in the package.
I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Caroline, do you have any questions about that?
I do not.
Dave?
I do.
Okay.
DNI was wondering, you know, on the alternatives that were suggested by the county to the railroad grade. All of them, all of them have at least a part that goes through city open space. And what is our role as far as evaluating those? Because I'm concerned that some of the natural values that are certainly associated with railroad grade, ironically enough, are certainly associated with some of the alternatives as well. So I would like to make sure that we're participating at a very high level and that those concerns are being considered by the county.
Right, yeah. And Dave, we have Casey French, who is available to speak in more detail if my high-level answer does not suffice. But so when we learned from the county, based on some county commissioner conversations, that perhaps we ought to be looking at some less sensitive areas outside of the right-of-way, I first want to clarify that railroad right-of-way is on open-space lands. There's just a right-of-way through it. So regardless, all of these routes in some form or fashion would be on open space to mountain parks property. However, the railroad grade was sort of historically as represented in the regional plan. It was always sort of envisioned for the railroad grade. About a few months ago or earlier this year, it was expressed at county commissioner level that, well, let's just not have that be a foregone conclusion. Maybe we should look at some alternatives. So the alternatives, before even alternatives were discussed, we, the department probably, well, did realize that alternatives would likely still be on open-space lands outside of the railroad grade. And so what would be our role in that? And so we requested that between the two agencies that we develop a memorandum of understanding to provide some clarity that we do have, even though the county is the lead project manager for this, that we wanted to have an enhanced role throughout the process, realizing that the lands that could be utilized for portions of this trail would be on open space. But I'll turn things over to Casey if she wants to elaborate on some of the more details within the memorandum of how the department would participate.
Could I perhaps ask my questions before you speak, Casey, and then you can address them all at once, maybe?
Sure.
I really appreciate the sequence outlined on page two for this item memo of identifying the evaluation criteria and going into the alternative analysis with representatives from OSMP staff to find the least impactful and most beneficial alignments. And I just want you to know, based on your staff work, that I really appreciate that level of detail in what's being proposed as far as the planning. My questions have to do with the map. I guess it's page one and two of the map. And my question is, there's a dotted white line that goes down, is that 75th to Belmont? And then I'm assuming, because there's a white dotted line over on the right-hand side of the map, I'm assuming that there is also intended to be a white dotted line between 75th and the right dotted line south of Belmont. There's got to be a way for users to get from 75th along Belmont over to the right. And so that's my first question.
Karen, I'm going to try to clarify, just so I'm answering your correct question, your question. So you're right. One of the alternatives being considered to look outside of the 75th right-of-way is along the east side of 75th on the Manchester property. And then from there, you can either join the right of, you know, the RTD corridor, shown in pink, or another alternative would be the white line that you mentioned that is south of the RTD corridor, that is kind of south of the wetland delineations. And are you speaking farther, farther east or?
On page one, on page one of the map, if you look on the right-hand side.
Yes.
There's a box that says, Consider Burt Alignment on South Side of Belmont.
Yes.
But it only starts on that curve.
Yes.
My question is, is it intended to go from that curve all the way back to 75th along Belmont? Because there's no.
Yeah, so the white line is just showing the portion that they want to look out outside of the county right-of-way. They feel along the rest of the Belmont corridor that they could stay within the county right-of-way along Belmont, but that that particular area with the curve that says, Consider, you know, Burt Alignment South Side of Belmont is just another alternative within that quarter, because there's some right-of-way constraints that they feel they might want to look just outside of the county right-of-way. Does that?
I think what you're saying is that the trail with that alignment would go from 75th along the Belmont right-of-way or the Belmont shoulder or something.
Correct.
Until it gets to the white dotted line.
Correct. It would all stay within the Belmont County right-of-way.
Okay, and then my only other question about the map has to do with the beautiful color renderings of what ownership it is and whose management it is under. And there's two greens shown, one for OSMP HCA designations and one for OSMP natural area. So if you're describing this route, you could tell me when the green is HCA and when the green is natural area?
Sure.
I can appreciate that distinction. I can't tell, it seems to me the pink dots are.
OSMP.
B, okay. But the diagonal lines are county conservation easement?
No, well, there are a couple diagonal lines. So the black one is no public access for.
No, I'm talking about the pink diagonals. Or maybe they're brown instead of pink.
The brown, yeah, that's county conservation easement, Karen, yeah.
But what about between 75th and 95th? There's diagonal pink or brown or?
That is, that is between 75th on the habitat conservation area, green with the pink dots. There is both. There is both the no public access and then on to the other, on Erdel 3, I believe. That is that the brown, the brown hatching indicates the county conservation easement over that. So there's the both of the hatching. So it is, it is busy. They were trying to, they were trying to display a lot, a lot of ownership information on the map, but there are both on that. As far as the greens, Karen, I think the place you can see it the best is on the first page of the map. So if you're looking around like 61st Street, like or west of 75th, those are the, that's the natural area green. And then from 75th all the way east is all HCA.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Okay.
So Casey, were these alternatives, were they suggested by us after the county consulted with us? Or were they outlined and then asked, we were asked for our input?
The latter. So yes, they had been out there kind of extensively looking at kind of the wetlands and areas of, you know, concern. And they approached us and asked if we would, if we would allow them to be, you know, evaluated as part of this alternatives. And we felt like allowing them so we could explain the, you know, the values, the impacts, the benefits of these, you know, comprehensively kind of allowing all the alternatives to be studied was, it was a good approach to be comprehensive, so we could understand the area as a whole. But they did select them, and we said that was okay to include them in the evaluation with our process requirements. And so, and to answer your first question, I would say that, you know, especially where there is on OSMP lands, there is very outlined in the MOU, a very detailed process. And then to answer your other question, for the ones that aren't on our lands, we are still involved in the evaluation and criteria of, you know, all the other alignments, right? As a whole, that upper, at that overarching level. Because I heard you kind of ask that question, if that's what I, if I heard correctly.
Right. So is the MOU signed?
Yes.
So it's in place?
It is.
And I've heard that this, that the red line that goes through the whole thing, the actual railroad right-of-way is owned by RTD, is that true?
Um, the ownership is a little bit complicated and who owns portions of underlying, but, and Bethany and you can speak to those details if we want to delve into them. But for the most part, yes, they own that right-of-way, although we might own the underlying land underneath that.
To kind of jump on your question, not to really go into the details of it if it's complicated, but is there a reason why it became complicated? Or, you know, when it was bought or done or how long ago that, has it always been a bit messy, if you will, or?
Yeah, it's, the ownership has been for, well, it's been a long time since they've owned it. And I think that historically, RTD doesn't, you know, they might maintain that they have ownership interest, and we might also feel that we have ownership interest in certain parcels.
There's Bethany.
I think she's eating.
Apparently somewhat dark in here. No, Casey's doing a great job. So the reason it's complicated, remember that RTD did acquire this from Union Pacific. It was originally a railroad corridor. And so it all goes, it goes back to how those railroad, either rights-of-way or deeds were established. So in some situations, they were, they were deeded the actual underlying fee land in very few of those situations. In most situations, it really was a right-of-way, a transportation or a railroad right-of-way granted over fee title lands. And so that then carried forward. So what RTD has acquired is the railroad right-of-way, which is subtly different, but similar to an easement, right? It's a dominant estate easement over the property to use for certain uses. And in this case, a transportation corridor, which could include that, the regional trail. And so that they could grant without further kind of licensing or things like that. They could grant the right for a trail. And you've heard a lot about kind of rails to trails and things like that. And so that's, so where Casey's saying it is complicated, it is because we do own in many of these situations, that underlying fee, but there is that dominant right-of-way interest held by RTD.
And you said that they could, yes, thank you. And they could grant the right to a trail due to the railroad to trail laws. I don't know if that's the right word.
Right, because it's considered, it is still considered a transportation corridor. And multi-use trails, regional trails would be encapsulated in that definition, in that federal definition of a transportation corridor, yes.
Dave, does that answer your questions? Okay, I think we're good. Thank you very much for that explanation. And I really appreciate, as I look at the map, I say to myself, I think it's a good thing that you're exploring the loop down to Belmont Road as a possibility. And I'll be looking at all the natural resources and the impacts. And we get back to OSPT at the appropriate time.
Great, thanks, Karen.
Thank you.
Karen, before we go on, we did have two hands raised for public comment that weren't signed up, and I missed the hands. So we can decide when, if you want to, when you want them to speak, but I did miss them.
Okay. For public comment, not about.
Public hearing, exactly.
Okay. Thank you, Allison. Let me just ask one more question, and then I think we'll be done with Matters from the Board. I have been asked about the meeting location and whether it's time for OSPT to start meeting in chambers with public in chambers with the board or virtually as council is now doing.
Yep. And. And I did not get a return call in the last couple of days since you asked me. So I will turn to my colleagues to see if they happen to know where we might be situated in Q1 of 2023.
My last we heard is we don't have a date of when we return to in-person with the public. My understanding of the council chambers is they have, they're using Channel 8 and not Zoom, which is the platform we're using. So they're not actually set up for our current format.
But I will get my return call back, and I will find, and I will provide an email to the board to update you on, before the holiday.
Yeah. Okay. Perfect.
But in public participation, on Channel 8, how does that happen if it's not on Zoom?
It's both. It's, I think they record on, I think it's Zoom and Channel 8 up there.
Maybe like one's live and one's recording.
If you watch city council meetings, you can see that it happens very similarly to what we're doing here. There are people who show up in person, and there are people who also use a Zoom square like we're doing tonight.
So the purpose of my question is then, why doesn't it work for us?
Well, it would, it just takes a lot more staff. They, for the council meetings, they have people running Zoom and Channel 8.
Like a whole tech crew there.
Yes.
So the question is, could we do it just? So the question is, could we do it just using Zoom, right?
That would be a question.
Cause it hasn't been done post COVID. Is that?
Right. Hybrid.
I, I will say for our meeting though, I was speaking with members of the public since our last meeting and there were members that. Said that they just, they wanted to participate, they wanted to say a comment and they were just not interested in Zoom. And I guess being in, you know, we all kind of exist in the land of Zoom now, so it seems normal. But there were people that were, that were like, I will come and show up and speak, but I'm not going to sit on the computer. So we, we are missing people in our community because of it. So I just want us to, to note that. That that, that, that is existing right now.
Thanks, Carol.
And for the record, I have never considered Zoom to be normals. And so the other thing then, pre-COVID staffing wise for meetings in chambers. Are there more staff now required than there were pre-COVID staff requirements?
During the furlough and the layoff process that the city went through in order to work within the budget. We lost some comms and engagement staff positions that were helping to support these platforms. We, the city.
Oh, we do.
And that level of capacity has not returned for those, for those. So we are under, we, the city. Is under more limitations as far as how they can support meetings. So that, I think that goes into some of the. The issues that we're having from the boards and commissions perspective.
Okay, we'll look forward to your report, Dan.
Yep, I will find out shortly.
And now that we're done with matters from the board, let's go back to public comment. Other than e-bike comments. For the additional two people that Allison has lined up for this.
The hand. So we'll start with Lynn. Okay, Lynn, if you could.
Yeah, I think Zoom is, is clearer. I can see, I mean, with Zoom windows, I can see each person's face. In a room full of live people, I have to squint to see everybody. And so it's actually much better. It's much clearer to whom you're speaking. And to whom you're, you know, interacting with. It just seems obvious to me, but maybe I'm way off. In any case, I'm really insulted that my video is not allowed just because of COVID. We have so many restrictions. I'm really sick now. I have no heat in my house. I can't afford it. You know, I have enough issues in my life without being further insulted. By you not even wanting to see my video window. That's really hurtful that you don't care. Now, as far as what I wanted to say. Which it seems like it's always blocked by yet another meeting two days ago where. Housing Advisory Board didn't even let anyone into the meeting for one hour. When I finally got into the meeting, a half an hour later, I was ejected. How much more insulting can things get? I think Sarah Huntley needs to be fired a long time ago. I think our, the city's money could be a lot better spent with people that are really public engagement. And communications people, not former cops. Because under her, it feels like I'm under arrest all the time. When I'm just trying to participate in public civil actions. Now, as far as what I have to say, it would be nice on occasion to have some iterative process. There never is. That's really sad. Because I value you all. I value what you say. And if there's something I'm saying that you disagree with or that I am, I'm not understanding properly, I want to hear about it. But I don't have any means. I'm not allowed. I'm just talking into a void. I think that your efforts are really going to be difficult with the expansion of growth. From CU South and from all the impacts to our open space. And you need to do something about it yourselves. Because no one else is. I go to ten other meetings and I can see it happening all the time. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Lynn, and we appreciate your comments.
Okay, and then we have Marky McCaff.
Are we on e-bikes now?
Well, this person is signed up under e-bikes, but the hand has been up since the beginning. So I'm assuming it's also for both public comment, but now.
Why don't you put her on and let's ask her whether she has commented something other than e-bikes?
Okay, the hand went down, so.
Let's hit you unmute her.
Yeah.
Marky, do you have, do you have comment on e-bikes?
I, I think I asked, I have only comments on e-bikes, e-b, e-bikes. And I did not mean to raise my hand. I didn't realize that it was.
Thank you very much. We'll call on you soon because we're getting into e-bikes next. Thanks.
Very attentive to put the hand down.
Okay, I think we're done with open comment. Okay, the next item on the agenda is. A public hearing regarding the recommendation to city council and consideration of a staff recommendation. To the Open Space Board of Trustees on the authorization of e-biking as a passive recreation use of open space trails. What we're doing tonight is having a short staff presentation. Then we'll have a period of clarifying questions from the Open Space Board of Trustees. Followed by approximately an hour of public hearing. And then any final comments the Open Space Board has on requests for additional information. Or data to be brought to the January meeting. At that point, we will pause our, our consideration of the e-bike question. And move on to other agenda items. We will return to the e-bike question at our January eleventh meeting. And deliberate and consider Open Space Board recommendation to city council regarding e-bikes on open space trails. Any other comments?
No, you stole my thunder. That was my, that was my speech. You did it better than I was going.
I'll take, I'll take yourself.
No, well said.
Thanks, Dan.
I'll just remind folks listening, maybe for the first time. That this has in some form or fashion, this is now our third of four planned touches with the board. We had an introductory type of meeting in July. In November, we provided a very thorough. Board memo as well as a presentation. And now tonight, we're at what Karen said and then we'll reconvene this portion of the public hearing portion. Although there will not be additional public testimony in, in January. So. That's just some additional comments to what Karen has already set us up for. And with that, we'll move into the short, the shorter presentation as, as opposed to the November presentation. And I will introduce Marnie Ratzel, Principal Planner, to lead us through the presentation portion.
Good evening. I'm pleased to be here and I just shared my screen. So are you seeing the presentation up on the screen in there? Perfect.
And I hope the people at home can see it as well, the evaluation of the e-biking on open space. Okay.
Oh, good evening, Open Space Board of Trustees. My name is Marnie Ratzel. I'm a principal planner with the department in the Planning and Design Services team. And as Dan said, I have a short presentation. Tonight I'll be presenting the department's staff recommendation. To the Open Space Board of Trustees regarding e-biking as a passive recreational activity on open space trails. I am going to do a high level overview of information that complements the staff memo in your package. For, for December, as well as the information shared at the November meeting. So as you can see, I'll provide some background information and then I'll delve a little bit more into the details on the approach. Of the recommendation for allowing e-bikes on open space trails. We also heard from the board last month that there's some additional information that would help them in, in making their recommendation. And so I'll cover that a little bit as well. I'll land, I'll end with next steps before, before we move on to the other part of our meeting tonight. Okay, so for background, in terms of where we are in the process, tonight's a public hearing. On the preferred, on the final recommendation to, from staff to the Open Space Board of Trustees. And it is a public hearing offering the community the opportunity to provide comments on that staff recommendation. I know you've just heard this, but we want to be clear about what the process is. So again, next month in January, the board will return and have a discussion and are scheduled to make their recommendation. The public hearing tonight has been communicated through our, our website and several, several other. Communication channels. Phil Yates is here tonight if you have any questions. But I think it's been well publicized and just wanted to share some of the information that we've put out to everyone on that. So the background is that current city policy prohibits e-biking on open space trails. And requires disposal if we were to allow e-biking. E-biking, I'm sorry, alternatives to disposal is just one of the reasons why we're evaluating e-biking on open space trails. Other objectives are to improve access for more ages and abilities of visitors. And provide a consistent experience for visitors, as well as supporting the broader climate, climate goals. So in considering whether to change the existing policy that prohibits e-biking. Staff identified and evaluated alternatives of where and which trails might be appropriate for e-biking. And we shared those out with the public for some feedback. So the three alternatives would be allowing e-bikes on all trails that allow bikes. On the Plains Trails, which are located east of Broadway, as well as on the Boulder Canyon Trail. And that's alternative B. And alternative C is interconnected trails. That allow biking as a part of the regional trail network. That links with city transportation and Boulder County Regional Trails. Over the summer, OSMP gathered community input regarding, during our community engagement window. The primary forums to gather feedback were on, were an online engagement questionnaire. And an onsite intercept survey. That was conducted at select open space trails. Now, key findings from both of these surveys were presented last month and we discussed it in detail. And I want to just share a few highlights for, for those joining us for our public hearing tonight. So overall, the majority of respondents for both surveys indicated support for e-biking on open space trails. Over the option of the status quo that exists today. We've got seventy-two percent of respondents to the engagement questionnaire. And sixty-three to the onsite intercept survey that indicated support for e-biking on some open space trails. Looking at the support for alternatives, respondents to the online engagement questionnaire. Indicated majority support for managing e-bikes on trails identified in alternative B, which is the Plains Trails. And the Builder Canyon Trail. And that was also shared as the preliminary staff proposal during the engagement window. Preferences for alternatives that allow e-biking were more evenly distributed from respondents. The onsite intercept survey at trail locations. With about a quarter of them expressing a preference for alternative A, which would be all trails that allow, that allow bikes. The onsite intercept survey also gathered input on the level of support for each alternative. Which indicated that many respondents supported all three management alternatives to allowing e-biking. Even if they did prefer one specific alternative. So the best way to describe that is, for example, almost all of the respondents who overall preferred alternative A. Which I showed in that last slide of allowing e-bikes on all trails that allow biking. It's about twenty-six percent. Those respondents, or I should say respondents also indicated support for alternative B and C. As you can see on, on this graph here. The onsite intercept also asked questions with a Likert scale of, you know, extremely unlikely to. Extremely likely in terms of outcomes, which you're seeing at the top of the screen. And degree to which folks were concerned about allowing e-bikes. And so not at all on the left side to extremely on the right. And what's important about this is that understanding the current areas of concern and expected outcomes. Is helpful for informing current and future management. And such as how to develop effective communication and where to invest our monitoring resources. So we gathered a lot of information, not just about the alternatives or what folks are, but perspectives. About, about how we can manage for e-bikes and what we should consider in moving forward. Public input, we did get a lot of it. We had over twenty-three hundred folks speak to the engagement questionnaire. And over four hundred to the onsite intercept survey. It is one of many factors that is used to develop or that was used to develop the staff recommendation and the preferred alternative. Really, we're, you know, trying to understand where to allow e-biking. And, and as well as whether to allow it as a recreational activity. So you're seeing here all of the inputs that really helped inform the staff recommendation. So your memo this month and your packet, the memo in your packet includes some analysis. And I want to also share, you know, in November, we had some robust information on the community input and additional staff analysis. What I'd like to cover tonight is to supplement that analysis. And highlight the approach for that staff recommends for allowing e-bikes on open space trails. So I'm going to break it down into what, how and where. In terms of the, the recommendate, the recommended approach. What is to allow class one and class two e-biking as a passive recreational use on certain open space trails? Where designated, which is how we manage biking on open space trails today. We, so class one and class two is defined here for those that are tuning in more recently. In terms of how, we recommend a new ordinance approved by city council. That would amend the Boulder revised code. And that draft ordinance, it would be, the new ordinance is included in your packet as attachment A. It would add an open space regulation to authorize e-biking on open space trails through a legislative finding by council. That e-biking is a passive recreational activity. And also authorized rulemaking authority by the city manager. To pass a rule for designating those trails that allow e-biking. By using the visitor master plan criteria for passive recreation. The ordinance also includes regulation amendments to include IP, I'm sorry, to include e-biking. So that we can enforce those regulations on open space trails. And lastly, part of that ordinance is to repeal the existing ordinance that prohibits e-bikes on trails. So if the staff recommendation advances and is a. So if the staff recommendation advances and is approved by council, open space and mountain parks would proceed with a city manager rule on the preferred trails identified in alternative B. As I mentioned, includes the Plains Trail and Boulder Canyon Trail. So I'm going to quickly go over the additional information requested by the board. And there is one additional piece of information that we're able to share tonight. So I'll cover that in a little bit greater detail. And again, the analysis, this is outlined in your, the analysis section of your memo. We included an enhanced map of the, of the OSMP trails that allow biking and depicts connection points with our trails that are managed by agency partners. We also responded with a comparison of demographic data for OSMP surveys and the census, additional information and data analysis for the onsite intersect, intercept data, as well as information on combining the resident survey into visitor surveys, which was a topic of discussion last month. The board asked for some information on enforcement, both what violations and fines are, some is issued, and how, a little bit more information beyond what we shared last month for management approach for e-biking. We provide some information on open space and mountain parks and accessibility, as well as the e-bike battery management system with the acronym BMS. And lastly, we included a summary of unique ideas from the on, online engagement open-ended responses. So there was a lot of information, as you can see, that the board requested, and it was a short turnaround. So we weren't able to include this information in your, in your memo, but I can share it tonight. The board requested a comparison of primary activity across open space and mountain park surveys. And part of the impetus and what I, what we heard last month was there was a request to compare to the master plan survey. And I believe it was this question, which asked respondents to select which two activities they most frequently participate in open space areas. It did not ask the primary activity. So we had a little bit of work to do to, to make that comparison happen. And to show the comparison, we redistributed the results to this question to show each activity as a proportion of the total number of responses to the question. With each respondent selecting two activities, you know, we had to do a little bit of math. And what you're seeing is the eighty-five percent that identified hiking and walking as one of the two activities. When you break it out, that is more around thirty-seven percent would, would say that they hike or walk on open space. So what does that look like across our surveys? The side-by-side comparison shows that the results align fairly closely between the master plan and other surveys conducted by OSMP, including the e-bike intercept and the e-bike online. There's some variability, but you can see that's, you know, the information that we're providing you. And we'll be sure to post this information so that you'll have it moving forward. So a couple more things that we're still working on that will provide the forthcoming information. Will provide either before or as part of the January packet are the widths on trails that allow biking on OSMP and working with our agency partners with a comparison of visitation between our trails and theirs. So getting to the staff recommendation and preferred alternative. In conclusion, the staff recommendation to the Open Space Board of Trustees is to authorize class one and class two e-biking as a passive recreational activity permissible on open space and allowed only on certain designated trails through an ordinance that would be approved by council as detailed and as I described just a bit ago. The preferred alternative for managing e-bikes on open space trails that staff recommends is alternative B. Plains Trails and the Boulder Canyon Trail represents about thirty-four miles of our trail system, which is about twenty-two percent of the hundred and fifty-four miles of the network. Why staff recommends this management alternative? You know, it really is the middle proposal that best addresses the management challenges that we've identified through our evaluation by, but by providing a consistent visitor experience and regulations that are easy to understand, easy to comply with and easy to enforce. It also increases the opportunities for visitors of more of more ages and abilities to access and enjoy our open space. And it might contribute to a reduction in greenhouse gases typically caused by motor vehicles, while, while having minimal impacts to natural resources, visitor experiences, visitor safety and the trail system. So bookending, how I began. The next up in the process is for staff to return to the board in January, when the trustees are scheduled to discuss the final staff recommendation to the board and then to provide city council with the board's recommendation. And that concludes my presentation tonight.
Thank you, Marnie. I just want to note, I think we might have a, a typing error on the next board meeting. I believe it's January eleventh, not the thirteenth. Is that correct? Yes. So just for those that are listening in, it will be January eleventh, Wednesday night, six o'clock on the eleventh, not the thirteenth. Just wanted to make that note, Marnie.
Thank you for, thank you for that, Dan. My apology.
Okay, thank you very much, Marnie. I'd like to allocate the next forty-five minutes to boards clarifying quest, questions to clarify what staff has already presented. And what I'd like to do is suggest that that gives each of us probably about a maximum of ten minutes. So if, if a board member reaches the ten minutes, I'm going to ask them to stop at that point and so that we can get to all board members. And then if we have extra time at the end, we'll rotate back to board members that have more questions. Okay. Jonathan, would you like to begin with clarifying questions for staff?
Sure. So I had two questions. The first one was, we're, we're giving rulemaking authority to the city manager to like make a decision on which trails allow e-bikes. Is that the same way currently that, you know, a trail would be designated to allow bikes? Oh, I wasn't sure if that was like, is that normal? And is that how, you know, other trail designations are made? Or is this, is this a different process by allowing the city manager to do that?
John, I can start off a little bit, and we also would have Janet Michaels from City Attorney's Office about the approach of, of, of a city manager rule and other applications for the city manager's rule. But I would say, John, for, for the most part, and Dave, who's and Karen, who's been following open space much longer than I have, probably would lean into this more. But the typical approach of taking a trail and designating the exact use of whether it's horseback, biking allowed, hiking allowed, dog use is typically done through a trail study area approach, which, for instance, West, West Trail Study Area, North Trail Study Area are some of the more recent ones, in which very specific uses are defined through that process. So this would be a different way, a different approach to do it outside of a trail study area of, of daylighting where we would apply that city manager rule, but to use a city manager's rule process for actually instituting those uses on those trails. So it would be a deviation from the trail study area approach. And again, I'm sure Dave or Karen, or any one other trustees that want to chime in to elaborate on that, feel free to do so. So I just want to acknowledge that it would be a, a different approach. Some, some of the reasons why is that we have been discussing at, at a staff level over the last few years of how we could apply adaptive management and management in, in a more flexible, nimble approach. So there's been a lot of call for using adaptive management more aggressively on open space. So for instance, if we would learn that a certain segment of a trail was, was or was not working on an e-bike approach, there'd be a little bit more flexibility through the city manager's rule to be able to make that change. Of course, we would only make that change through a daylighting process with the board. And there's actually also a process where if, if the board felt like they wouldn't heard, weren't heard, they could object to that city manager rule change. But I would say overall, staff was feeling that the application of the policy, so the policy being it's an open space passive use, let's apply it on designated trails, and then the management decision of where to place it would, would rest more with the city manager's rule. So I want to acknowledge that it's, that it is a deviation from the trail study area approach. And the reason being is we felt it would provide more flexibility, more nimbleness, and taking this new passive recreation to be able to apply it on specific segments throughout the system. Of course, it's the board's prerogative if they agree or disagree with changing our traditional approach. But we, we wanted to be honest that that's where the staff was landing and wanted to put, put it out there as an alternative approach to the trail study area kind of stuff.
Awesome. Thank you, Dan. That makes sense and seems reasonable. One other question I had is on the map, I, I've had a lot of folks from the public reach out and ask about Chapman and why it wasn't included in option B. And I actually don't even see Chapman on the map as like a, a bike trail when I'm looking at it. Is there a reason for that?
I'll start, and I'm not looking at the map, so I'll start with the response about Chapman. And I think that what I'd like to share from the internal discussions in terms of alternative B, you know, by and large is allow e-bikes on plains trails. So it's really more I want to respond to that by saying it's really about allowing e-bikes on plains trails with the recognition that the Boulder Canyon Trail is predominantly, I mean, it's really, it's managed by our community or by our agency partners. In the city limits, it's managed by transportation and mobility. And outside of the city limits, it's managed by Boulder County Transportation, I believe. It's managed by Boulder County. Could be Parks and Open Space, but what have you. What is happening on Boulder Canyon Trail is that there is a small segment, and we do have Bethany here. She needs to pop on to speak about some of the real estate challenges there. And because we have some interest, ownership interest, we, when Boulder County said, hey, we want to, we're considering allowing e-bikes and, you know, Boulder Canyon Trail would be a trail that we manage. We'd like to allow that. We said, hey, there's a portion that's on our land and we have an ordinance that prohibits that. So that would be an inconsistency that we would be seeking to have the city have the opportunity to have that dialogue and have that conversation to be able to have that consistent regulation so that you're not biking along and then all of a sudden, you know, I don't know, what do you do? You can't continue for that segment that's on our land. So alternative A doesn't include Chapman. And again, I'm not looking at the map. It's something that I can certainly take a look at and we can refine if we miss that in terms of showing it. I do believe Chapman is included on our, on our alternative A map as, as being.
It is.
Yeah, and Marnie, if I could just.
I was, I was just looking at at this map. It wasn't on there.
Yeah, it's mislabeled.
Yeah, we have a mislabeling. It's shown on the map, but the, the description for it does not say Chapman, and so we will make that correction.
Does that answer your question, John?
Yes, yes, I, I, I think it does. The other trail I've gotten some feedback on is Wonderland Lake area. I, I live in like far southeast Boulder, so it's not super familiar to me, but a lot of folks have reached out and talked about how important the north-south kind of commuter route that is by bike. So I've, I've seen a lot of folks, you know, express interest in, in us considering that one as well. So that, that's more of a comment than a, a question, but I just thought I'd throw that out there. I didn't, I didn't have any other questions.
Okay, thank you, John. Caroline, would you like to go next?
Questions. I know we're talking about alternative A, B, C or status quo, but we were also talking about alternatives for disposal. You were saying it could be through a legislative decision. Is the only decision that you're speaking about the city manager rule change?
That's the staff recommendation, yeah, to do a city manager rule change.
The staff recommendation. So will staff not be asking us for a disposal?
That's correct, I think. Yeah, I mean, that's not a recommendation. We had come to the board, and this was, this predates my time at, at OSMP. But we've covered this a little bit in the past. In twenty sixteen, we presented to the board a, a number of trails to dispose of. And that is one of the factors that, that brought us kind of moving forward to have this conversation was disposing of those trails was not the preferred approach that we heard from the board at the time. Since it predates me, if Dan or Casey, or for that matter, Bethany have anything to add, by all means, let me know or take the floor.
And Caroline, and maybe this is already reiterating something that you know, and that maybe isn't part of your question, but under the status quo, since e-bikes are not allowed through the Boulder Revised Code, if we were to allow e-bikes, we would, we would need to dispose and, and not have open space mountain parks be the manager of those trails. So it'd have to be disposed of to another department. So the only way that e-biking could take place on any trails that is managed by the open space department is by making the change to the Boulder Revised Code as well as through the city manager's rule of designating which trails would be, could be designated for e-biking. Under that scenario, if those changes were made, that we would no longer need to dispose of open space lands. We could continue to own them for all their open space charter purposes, which would then include e-biking as a passive recreational use. So if we made the changes to the Boulder Revised Code and we, a, a city manager's role was made to designate where we would not need to go through a disposal of open space lands to have those, any of those trails be e-bike accessible.
But if the board voted yes, if the board wanted any of the alternatives and said yes, but we're not being asked to dispose.
No, you're being, staff is recommending that the, that the board recommend, the council that they make amendments to the Boulder Revised Code and also to, through a legislative finding that e-biking is a passive recreational use. So then the Boulder Revised Code would say you can e-bike on open space. And under that change, we could then manage them as a department and we would not need to dispose them.
But then, moving forward with disposal, would that only cover e-bike or once it was opened up? Or once it was opened up, that a disposal was being made under city manager rule, then therefore and forevermore, that would be something that could be open for any type of disposal?
No, the city manager rule in this case would be only to designate which trails e-biking would be allowed on.
And then Yeah, I just want to clarify, Caroline, because I the city manager rule would not dispose of open space either. I'm not sure. I think I heard you say the city manager rule would dispose of the open space. One of the, one of the reasons why staff isn't proposing disposal is, you know, as I mentioned, the percentage is about 22% of our trail system. And it would be, we would, by disposing, there is no authority by open space and mountain parks or for that matter, OSPT to on those trails moving forward because it would no longer be ours. It would be transportation and mobility or possibly, you know, another department or even another partner agency. So it is a one of the benefits of of the city manager rule and authorizing e-bikes on open space trails. As Dan said, is that there are multiple objectives and open space purposes and values that we can continue to manage those trails and, you know, for those purposes.
That disposal remains the in the purview of the open space board solely?
Right, if those trails remain under the auspices of open space mountain parks, then the board continues to have disposal authority over those trails.
And that's because there is an ordinance today that was passed by city council that prohibits e-biking and states that if e-biking is to be allowed, it would be it's only through disposal purposes, which brings us, you know, the proposal is to amend that ordinance.
Yeah, no, I know it's not. I just want to make sure that I understand the process of what would happen moving forward because this is different. So if I ask the same question twice, I'm sorry, I'm just wanting to really make sure because under any other type of disposal, if the board voted yes, it would go to city council. If the board voted no, that would be where it would end. This is different because you're not asking for a disposal, you are asking to make a material change and have it be the city manager's rule change. So I just want to make sure that I'm understanding the process and what that means moving forward with any other processes, what that might open up. But I did have a question and I probably will need to loop back to that, but just for me to know. We talked about enforcement. Since it would stay, if it was passed under the staff recommendation, it would stay with open space and mountain parks. What, what I heard you say enforcement, but I think I missed it in your presentation. I saw at the end a slide that talked about fines or, you know, talking to the public about speed. But what are we actually going to do for enforcement or what does the state feel is the most important part of this to enforce, to have enforcement?
So we would enforce e-bikings similar to how we enforce other activities on our open space trails. You know, e-biking is very similar to biking, so very similar to enforcing biking on trails. We cover that in your, in your materials and in your memo. The Rangers patrol our system and patrol high visit, high visited trails, but also can do targeted enforcement to particular areas. So one of the things we covered last month was we would continue to do patrol on our trails as well as enhance our patrol by doing some targeted patrol on trails that 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 are managed, that that would be managed for e-biking to be able to help with that. Part of enforcement is supported by, and one, probably one of the best way is self-enforcement or helping our public comply with the rules by knowing what the rules are. And by and large, you know, we can get into, we've done a lot of survey work that demonstrates that people do want to do the right thing and when they know what that is, they, they do want to comply. So education is a big part of enforcement. But the way our Rangers is our Rangers have the discretion and have the tools available to them of the Boulder Revised Code, which is why some of what is outlined in the ordinance is to clarify and ensure that and and make sure that we are covered so that if an egregious behavior is identified by a ranger, they have the tool to be able to write a summons and take action on that.
There was someone, I'm so sorry to interrupt you. So if there was someone on an e-bike that was being a nuisance, the way everyone says, you know, if you bet apples, can kind of ruin everything. And someone called and said, you know, on this trail every Saturday morning, there's someone being a nuisance on the bike and and if it's really just seems like it's always this one person and if we could take care of that, there probably wouldn't be a problem. You said summons. Does that mean that the ranger can show up there and give them a summons to appear in court for speeding or being a nuisance on on a trail?
I don't know if we have a ranger representative joining us this evening.
He just gets to eat. Yeah, Burton, Burton is here and he he said he could chime in on this one.
That sounds good. Caroline, just for your reference on page, I think it starts on maybe page six, but on page six and seven of the of the agenda item four, it lists all of the charter, I'm sorry, not charter, the Boulder Revised Code sections that that our Rangers can and you know, can write a summons for. As to those details that you started to get into about court and stuff, I'm going to let Burton handle that.
Thanks, everybody.
And not only is Burton a ranger, he's a head honchos.
Thanks, Karen. Burton's one of Ranger manager tonight. Caroline, certainly we can address a egregious issue with summons, which does potentially put someone into the court system. And so those things are handled in different ways by the courts. So there might be a mail-in option, maybe a mandatory appearance, those kinds of things. So those are pre-designated by the courts. The, to Marty's point though, that, and you were getting at it yourself, actually, there may be a few individuals that are creating this perception of a problem in an area. We want to start this program or we would start this program with a very large outreach effort. Right? So we would be in those areas on those trails. Whatever's decided upon here. So if there were trails allowed e-bikes, then we would have the right signage. And one thing this department does very well is is a lot of outreach. So that could be whether that's our outreach staff, Rangers, our volunteer bike control program, there's lots of ways to really manage the information that's going out to people.
I just feel like for the e-bikes, it would be a good idea to really consider exactly what we would put out to the public for enforcement. And I think it would be a good idea to consider strict enforcement in order to let our Rangers have enough leverage or have enough ability to enforce something to be able to change it. Because I do feel that more than likely with e-bikes, most people don't cause problems with them, but the people that do cause problems with them because of the nature of the speed and the size of trails and many other factors, it could, it could actually lead to, you know, the worst case scenario. So making sure that the people that are out there to enforce really have the ability to enforce, I think is super important for this issue.
Okay, thank you, Caroline. We reached the end of your time, so I'm going to move on to Dave next.
Great, thanks. I have a few questions, Marty. So I'm, I'm going to start by asking about the staff determination of e-bikes being non-motorized passive recreation. And ask about the legislation legislative finding process, which is referenced several times in the memo so that you can explain in greater detail what that entails. So my question is, what was the process staff used to determine e-bikes were an appropriate use of open space in mountain parks? And I'm going to come back to something that Dan kind of references that. You know, there's 55 years of precedent that appeared to be discarded in this process as far as non-motorized use of open space. And it's replaced by bureaucratic fiat seemingly. So I am wondering how staff arrived at that decision? And then what is the legislative legislative finding process that council uses to declare e-bike use as passive recreation?
Sorry, I had to unmute there. So the I didn't write down all your stuff. I might ask Janet to to take the or help with the legislative finding piece, but essentially the ordinance, which is in your packet, explains as part of the ordinance, city council would make a legislative legislative finding that e-bikes is passive recreation. Part of what we described in the memo is some of the consideration for are e-bikes appropriate for open space? Where we began is taking a look at the visitor master plan criteria. And and what, what we determine through our evaluation is that e-biking is really similar to biking and would, and that the department would manage e-biking like biking. So the determination is that the e-biking meets the visitor master plan criteria. In the visitor master plan, that is where a definition of passive recreation exists. And it, there's two parts of it. One is a statement that passive recreation are non-motorized activities that meet the following criteria. We recognize that there's some interpretation of e-bikes as non-motorized and some interpretation of e-bikes as motorized. Part of where that stems from is in 2017, the state of Colorado legislature changed the law and determined that e-biking is not motor, is not, is a, is not a motor vehicle. It reclassified it and provided the three classifications. As well as that legislation from the state said, e-bikes are allowed on bike and pedestrian trails unless prohibited by a local jurisdiction. And part of this is is background in history, which we provided in the past, and I'm thankful for you to bring it up again, especially for our public that are joining us this evening. So I apologize, I'm not going through some slides here and if it gets old listening to me, let me know. The, so let's see. It, we have that, we have that existing ordinance that prohibits e-biking on open space trails. And as a result of that change at the state level, our partners such as Boulder County went through a process and said, hey, what do, what do you think, community? And what do you think, department and Boulder County? And they said, we would like to allow e-bikes on plains trails. And one of the issues, you know, now I'm kind of delving into the, some of the inconsistencies in regulations. So in terms of where we come from of our e-bikes passive recreation or our e-bikes motorized or non-motorized, rather than debate that, the legislative finding does not change the definition of passive recreation in the visitor master plan. What it does is identify that e-bikes, even even if they are considered to be motorized, would be passive recreation determined and approved by council through legislative action. I don't know if I got all that right, so I'll ask Janet and others to to chime in if they have something to add.
Thank you, Marty. This is Janet Michaels with the City Attorney's Office. And Dave, I want to address your question about how council makes a legislative finding. So the legislative finding is a part of the ordinance that we are proposing would be adopted by city council. City council's process is to, it's, they, an ordinance goes through two readings unless it's an emergency and this isn't. So it goes through two readings. Staff prepares a memo similar to the memo that open space board of trustees gets with the staff's evaluation and analysis. There would be a public hearing then typically on second reading when the public has an opportunity to present their concerns or their support for for the measure. Council then deliberates. They determine through that deliberation process with that background education, whether they want to make a legislative finding. And we have drafted that finding and we've, we do this in lots of different ordinances where the city council makes a legislative finding. We simply have it in the ordinance that says, city council finds that operating a class one or class two electric assisted bike as defined in the code, and we have a definition for what it, what it is, is a passive recreational use of certain open space recreational paths and trails. So that's the process of how council would make a legislative finding. And I'm happy to entertain any questions.
Great. Thanks for that. So my other, another question I wanted to follow up on, one that both Caroline and John addressed as well. And Dan too, in that certainly my experience has, has, has not been the use of the city manager rule to designate trails. And I guess my question is, why do we find that to be necessary in this process? Because we, we as a staff and a board, in board can certainly identify, you know, potential trails and go through our traditional process and present that information to council for their approval as well. So I guess my question is, why are we using the city manager rule? Because it strikes me that it removes one of the open space boards, you know, major prerogatives as far as working with staff on approving management actions for open space and mountain parks plans. And so then my question becomes, what's the role of the open space board if these, if these actions begin, start being taken over by the city manager?
Dave, I'll start and then I'll let others chime in. So when you say that we deemed that as necessary, I would say this is a staff recommendation of what we would prefer. So this is not necessarily, we could, the board could certainly build out emotion, a motion that does not follow that path and that has more instructions, recommended, recommended instructions per se of where on the ground. So I want, I want to clarify that we don't view this, this is the only way it could happen. This is staff's preference. If the board does not agree with that preference, the board could certainly craft a motion that is more prescriptive in terms of where on the system. I, I started off by fully acknowledging that it is outside of a trail study area process and that it is a different process. Staff feels it allows it us to be a little bit more nimble. If we had a section of trail that was causing a problem, we would be able to go in in an adaptive management approach and make a change there in a fairly rapid, a more rapid procedure. I would say that just like we're daylighting now, that it's alternative B is how we would work with the city manager's role to do it. If we proposed any change, we would of course be in front of the board to let, let the board know, to get the board's feedback. There is also some language within the Boulder Revised Code. And Janet, you could elaborate that on this of the trustees wants that if a change is made to a city manager rule in which a border commission objects to it, you could provide that objection to city council. So there's other avenues the board could utilize if they disagreed with the So there's other avenues the board could utilize if they disagreed with the city managers change to an existing to to their existing managers.
And are we doing, are we in fact changing the rule or are we adding a new one?
Well, I I'll let Janet do the technicality. Believe that the council would be sort of instructing the city, a city manager rule be developed for designated where on the ground. These trails would be designated for this passive recreation use.
So if it was a new rule, then could we still object if it wasn't an existing rule?
And Janet, I don't know that you want to respond to that, but in the meantime, I I'm just going to say it's my considered opinion. That in fact, the board, staff and board do have the prerogative to make those trail decisions. And without a city manager oversight, and we have we the staff informs the council. In, you know, appropriate in necessary manner. If there are management concerns associated with various uses or areas of use, so.
Are you saying without council approval or?
Yeah, yeah, those are management actions that are taken. We we the staff and the board may inform council, this is what we're doing and they have an opportunity to. Question or consider that as well, but in general, I don't think they are certainly willing to take the direction.
As far as that pass procedure.
So.
We're I we're just at the end of your time.
Okay, I'm going to ask one more question, and it's an ordinance related question. If I can find it. So the disposal of open space land, it strikes me as the only option. That is actually being considered if an ordinance change is not done. So my question is. Why is the disposal of open space lands the only option? And I will just add this, that the charter clearly authorizes certain passive recreation uses where designated. And allows for exceptions to those uses when appropriate and necessary. In ordinance change is not required for exceptions. Council must be informed and presumably approve exceptions. And so we have we the open space mountain parks program, they have exceptions throughout the system. From, you know, the the direction that's provided in the charter. And it it strikes me that we should be able to to remove Janet, I can't remember the the specific ordinance citation. Saying that open bike, e-bikes are not allowed on open space. We can still repeal that and not have a disposal issue if in fact. We use what I consider to be the traditional approach to using the charter language and making those exceptions.
Where designated.
Where designated. So that was, that's my question, why is that not being considered as an option?
I think. Yeah, yeah, thank you. This is Janet Michaels with the City Attorney's Office. One of the, well. I guess we'd never considered it not, we wanted there to be lots of checks and balances in this, and the city manager rule would designate where. The open space trails could be and the the rule would the city manager would have to take into consideration. The five criteria that are set forth in the visitor master plan. So your your question, though, is a good one, and it isn't something that we had discussed internally, which is why do we even need a city manager rule? Why can't we just repeal the ordinance that prohibits e-bikes on open space and let? Staff with OSBT guidance identify which trails are appropriate. And, you know, I I'm not. I don't know that there's a reason why it couldn't be done that way unless. The team can identify that something that I'm not identifying sitting here. I will also add that that there is, if we do the city manager rule, there is an opportunity for the board. But I guess, you know, I turn it back over to Casey and to Marnie and and Dan. Whether that was a consideration or if there's something I'm missing just sitting here answering the question.
Well, if I could go just one second, so just a clarification, Dave, I want to make sure we're on the same page. So if if the policy change was made, but then the application was in the department's hands. And the board is an advisory board advisory capacity at that point, because the only. Rule, the only time the board would have sort of the approval, the yes or no would be on disposal, right? So if 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 we came, if the department came forward without a city manager's rule and said, here's where we're going to apply it. We make a recommendation to the board, the board says, yeah, we don't like the fact that you chose trails C, D, and E. We don't want them there, that would just be a recommendation back to the board and the board. I mean, to the staff and the staff would still have the ultimate decision of whether or not it wanted to take the staff's board's recommendation or to continue with the approach. The management approach that staff was originally thinking. So I just wanted to be clear that you would be a recommending body in that case back to the department.
And isn't that also true with the city manager rule? What you just described?
Yeah, Janet.
Yes, that is true.
So many people need to talk, we got to get rid of it in a ten minutes.
Yeah, I mean, yes, it's true with the city manager rule. Janet mentioned checks and balances, and part of the staff recommendation is recognizing the value that our community, that we as a city organization places on community and board inputs. Part of the checks and balances of having the city manager rule is an administrative process that is very transparent. That 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 includes a public comment period. So Janet, maybe you can. You can, I can either test my history of doing city manager roles, or you could share ultimately that process as well of how a city manager rule. Moves forward and 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 gets daylighted and approved.
I'm wondering, I'm wondering since over time at this point.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm going to ask I I because I have to know this question if I'm going to be asked to make a decision. So my question is, Janet, and thank you for being here and answering all these questions. I think maybe we just need to extend the time or something, but if we object to a city manager rule, if the board says that is not what they want. Right now, and I know we just implemented another idea to this, but then would staff come to ask us for a disposal? So if we said, no, we don't want to do a city manager rule, then would they say, okay, next month we'll come back and ask for a disposal?
No, that's that Janet Michaels with the City Attorney's Office, that's not the way that it is structured. If if OSBT, if the board objected to a city manager rule. And the city manager went forward to say, thank you for that input, but through the analysis, we are going to go forward with this. Then the board can appeal that to city council, and then city council will make a determination at that stage. So you kind of have an appeal process with the city council. It's under the charter, charter section one thirty.
Sorry, Janet, just before we leave this, I just want to make sure that we're clear that Janet, I I really appreciated your comments. Because I think they, what you summarized is exactly what I was asking about. And it just strikes me, Janet and Marnie, that the process. That we would go through is very similar, except there is no city manager, there's there's no city manager in the process. I mean, we would have public comment, we would go through our our usual process in order to. Arrive at those decisions. And so all I'm saying, it just strikes me that there's an additional ordinance we don't need. And there's an additional requirement in the process that is unnecessary as well.
I'm going to ask the staff with as many members of the staff as you choose to select. To consider this discussion that we've just had about the city manager rule and other approaches to use instead of a city manager rule. And include. A comparison of that or a pros and cons of that in the next in the January packet. So that we can take that under consideration as we read the January packet and before we deliberate at the January meeting.
So as a clarifying question, is there an alternative? Is there an alternative approach to a city manager's role to implement to designate which trails on the system would be allowed for that passive recreation?
To allow e-bikes where designated. On O S M P trails without going through a city manager rule. Yep.
All right, we're legislative finding process by council.
So Janet, looks like we're going to give you a little bit more homework to work with us on.
Great, thank you.
Because if members of the public would consider this to be something that they historically know would be a disposal. And something changes drastically. You know, they support this program, so that worries me, and I want to make sure everything is is laid out. Where everyone has a really good understanding of what what our process is going to be for this.
Because my question takes disposal off the table, and I think that is a very important consideration.
Yeah. Um, I'm, I see Janet nodding, and I assume that's okay with Casey and Marnie.
We may have to just reconvene on on just making sure we have enough staff time in between the holidays, but we can certainly do this request. And we'll we'll just figure out how much time it will will take and if any schedule adjustments are needed. And I'm not saying they are now, but we'll just take that into consideration.
Right.
Well, we should take the time we need, and so if we can't get it by January, and strikes me, this is really important. This is a major change in my mind, and it requires the time it requires. And if we can't do it by the January meeting, then we can figure out a time that, you know, we can do it. I mean, there's nothing magical about January.
There's nothing magical, and I would just also say that I think Casey's just iterating cautioning and approach. I think tomorrow we'll get on the phone with Janet, we'll have a little meeting, and I think we can quickly determine the length of time this might take and. And it might not be holidays, right? And 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 Marnie will just be working Christmas Day and New Year's.
Other than that. Which goes back to Catherine Harris's comment at the beginning, opening comments about doing this during holidays.
Marnie told me that she was excited about doing that.
But but I I do want to, I I'll honor Casey's cautionary tale. We will, we we won't know tonight whether or not we can do it in time, but we we quickly will ascertain that and and get back to you. Thanks.
Okay. I'm going to call on myself now for my ten minutes of of clarifying questions. And I want to start with the the fact that the packets have repeatedly referred to R R S E in the master plan. For things like encouraging multi-modal access to trail hits. And what I haven't heard is, and what I'm wondering why it has not been cited. Is C C E I D in the master plan, which is the statement about. Increasing awareness of the benefits of nature and the ways visiting O S M P lands can reduce stress and increase physical and mental well-being. And based on comments that we've received about stress. That visitors have experienced from having e-bikes silently zoom by or zoom up from behind them or so forth. Producing stress when we're trying to encourage use of O S M P trails to relieve stress. Whether you're going to be addressing those elements of the master plan. As you consider these e-bike recommendations or whether you've just decided not to.
And I can't say why C C E I D wasn't included, we were focused at the strategy, it's not the outcomes. So that is a desired outcome. We didn't, we didn't do the analysis of looking to what all the outcomes might. Be applicable. We we typically, when we are charting our actions, we align it at the strategy level. That's kind of that chart that we show, you know, each time it's it's identifying what strategies these actions take. That's at the presentation that we do, you know, kind of at the beginning of a lot of our presentations, so that's why.
Well, given that it's an outcome that we've targeted in the master plan. Of, I think it's important to consider it.
Include the outcomes.
Yeah, I mean, and in terms of the master plan has many different outcomes and many different strategies.
Correct, and my point is that some of them compete with others. And so to cherry pick and just select the ones that are supportive of. What you're thinking of doing is is not considering the whole of the master plan and all the complexities of of the document. We're dealing with a spider that's coming down.
We certainly did need to. We certainly did need to pick, you know, cherry pick ones that were just supportive. We were just looking at the strategy level. If you'd like us to, you know, take a look and see what outcomes, you know, might also apply to this, you know, we can. We were just focused at at a different level of the master plan, so that.
Okay, and and the other thing that I, as long as we're talking about the master plan. The way I read R R S E four is encourage multi-modal access to trail hits. Not multi-modal use of trails, but access to trail hits. And and so I think that's been used in a way differently than it's written into the master plan in my view. So I'd like you to take another look at that and see if it really is supportive. The other thing that that I that I don't understand in your consideration is in the twenty ten. O S M P study of Springbrook Loop. Where trail had had what Burton has described as an intensive implementation of bike use of Springbrook. Springbrook Loop. With heavy ranger and education staff present to educate the users. And then a follow-up survey. The survey found that. The number of respondents who experienced conflict with the bikes now on Springbrook Loop exceeded the acceptable range. So it seems to me that provides some on-the-ground experience that O S M P has had. About displacement of pedestrians on bike trails. So I question some of the statements that are being made by staff. In addition, the intercept survey. Shows that sixty-eight percent of respondents are concerned about rider travel speed. And fifty-six percent of respondents are concerned about displacing other visitors when e-bikes are allowed. So given that collection of existing data. I'd like to know what specific strategies staff is envisioning to prevent the obvious displacement and concern about displacement. That has been. Provided in evidence.
I'm not sure, Colin popped on, so I'm not sure. If somebody else was planning to respond to that as well. Part of the strategies we shared last month in terms of how to manage for e-bikes. And.
I understood from last month is that that you're planning on doing the same kinds of things that were done on Springbrook Loop when that trail. Accepted bikes as a new use. And we know what happened there in terms of the conflict, the bikes displaced the pedestrians. We have evidence of that, department data. And we have a high level of concern as evidenced in the intercept survey responses. That there's concern about that happening with the addition of e-bikes as proposed by staff now. So the kinds of reassurances that we've received in our packets. In my mind, don't give me any evidence that. Give me any evidence that the outcome will be different this time.
And uh, in addition to that study, um, our human dimension team does um. Periodic visitor studies that uh, that ask about conflict if a if a. A visitor has experienced conflict or, and it's not just about conflict, but have you, have you had an interaction with other visitors on the trail? How has that been? Uh, we it demonstrates that the majority of the interactions between bicyclists on our system. Like 98% are positive. Those that experience a conflict. Um, are are about 2% and um, I might have Colin double check my my percentages on this, but it's a um. Those that experience conflict is a um, a a few percent. Um, and then we say, okay, so if you, the few that have experienced a conflict, what um, is the cause of that conflict? Um bicyclists or bikers have been identified um, at about, I think it's about 6%. Colin, can you? Do you have that at your fingertips? Um, and some of this has been provided um, through the materials. So while I'm trying to.
The the difference I see between that, the the data that you're citing, and I agree with your description of that data. Is that that's data on what's going on on the system day to day. What I'm describing is adding a new bicycle use in a trail. And what happens in terms of displacing pedestrians.
And we have opened trails. Uh, for hiking and opened trails for biking and um. Part of that is around over the course of the past several decades. Our visitor data demonstrates that while we are seeing um. Uh, distribution change because of the new trails that uh, that are opened um, for different uses. We might have a distribution, there might be more bikes on this trail and more pedestrians on that trail. But overall, the percentages of our visitation um, has remained fairly consistent, at least insofar as bicyclists.
That's true, but I'm talking about a different situation. I'm talking about adding bicycle use. For trail and displacing visitors. And I'm very concerned about that and I have not seen. Evidence and I hope in our January packet, if you have additional evidence to bring to light on that subject of displacement. Adding a use like adding e-bike use and not displacing. Pedestrians. Because our experience in O S M P. As evidenced in, for instance, in this 2010 survey. Is that pedestrians get displaced. The same thing happened in the Marshall Mesa Trails. So if you have specific evidence or specific strategies that you know will work, I'd like to hear more about that in the January packet.
You have something to add? You looked like you wanted to talk to me. He did though, I think he did. Am I right, Colin?
Sure, um, yeah, I think I. There, there are a few things that we can certainly um, bring forward, some that's been shared in the past and some that I think we could. We could just bring forward in a more succinct way for the January packet to uh, describe some of the various things to. That you've brought up. Um, it is true that during the Springbrook Loop assessment. There was a threshold of 5% conflict rate that was sort of set as a target and it was up to six. Uh, right after the designation. In that particular case, bikes were a new allowed activity. Some of the other post monitoring that we did. Actually indicates that. Use went up across all classes, all activity classes, including hikers um, by quite. Significant margins compared to pre-designation. Um, as far as some of the other things. What we asked in the on or the intercept survey. Is levels of concern and that's a good place where we can get an indication of what those concerns are. To understand how we can match them up with the other data that we have. And as Marty. Mentioned, we do have a lot of conflict. Data or experience data that we collect on our standard. Visitor survey. Um, that's a good baseline for us to understand where things are at. And it can give some insight into. Sort of what people are experiencing on bike trails. We've also collected displacement information in the past. Those rates are pretty low. Less than. Well, I'll just say they're pretty low and we can get the exact figures put together for the January packet.
Thank you. Um, I have two other quick things. I want to thank you on page 10 for noting that you're pursuing visitation volumes and providing that that uh, data. What I'm eager to learn in January is not average visitation data or not. Data. That includes visitation in the middle of winter as well as summer, but peak visitation times. So that we know what the visitation volumes are by each user type for trails. That you propose east of Broadway. And and as as page 10 says, also nearby and similar trail segments managed by other agencies.
And you're saying you only want summer, like weekend, summer? That's all you?
No, peak visitation times. Whatever, whatever those peak visitation times are, not, not a season. But when the peak visitation is. Counted.
Okay, so so if there, so if it was existent in the winter, you would say that as well?
Just peak visitation, yep. And and uh, the reason why I think it's important for us to get a handle on that. Is to know whether these trails that have been selected have higher or lower peak visitation. Already before a new use is added. And a final quick note. The packets have told us that the National Wildlife Refuge allows class one e-bikes. And repeatedly, we've been told that we want to have consistent regulations. The intercept survey shows that 50% of respondents say that class two e-bikes should not be allowed. And so I'm wondering what the rationality, what the rationale is for adding class two bikes with both the intercept survey. Respondents recommending against it. And the National Wildlife Refuge only allowing class one. So the consistency argument. Would be to have only class one as opposed to class one and class two.
So the um, the the U S Fish and Wildlife Service is who manages the um, Rocky Flats National Wildlife.
Correct.
Reserve, which is um, a trail um, that would, that that connects um, uh, the southern bowl. Uh, southern bowl, sorry. Connects with the county at the southern line of, um, you know, between Boulder County and Jefferson County. So that that is a trail. That is actually, that is true. That is a consideration. Um, we also have um, several interconnected trails. That connect with Boulder County Parks and Open Space as well as City of Boulder um, Transportation and Mobility in our Greenway System. Um, in fact, many more trails that connect uh, to those. So you've called out a trail. Um, we have other community partners, both of which do allow both class one and class two e-bikes. Um, that is what uh, why our staff recommendation is to be consistent with uh, the community partners. Um, that. Our trails are very interconnected with and several of our trails are interconnected with. I also want to point out that um, and uh, since the intercept. Uh, or the uh, online engagement questionnaire um, did. Uh, have feedback as well that spoke to this um, that that talks about it. So.
And you know what I'm going to say is the online survey doesn't have valid statistically valid percentages for you to quote, but that's a difference of opinion about the value of the online survey. And how it should be used. It it'd be very helpful if we have more information about. How. Would propose management of trails that you're suggesting on the maps that you've given us. Interact with the other regional trails that you just mentioned. Um, for instance, Mayor Brockett has told me within the next six to eight years, there will be a huge. Bicycle commuter route from Boulder to Longmont in the center of the diagonal. With all the massive federal funding that's. Being offered up at this point. And and I'm sure that there will be class three bikes on that. Commuter bicycle trail, which will have underpasses under all the intersections and be a direct shot. From Boulder to to Longmont. With interchanges with the trails that you're proposing. So. There's going to be a, somebody's going to have to bite the bullet at some point and draw a line between class three. And class one and class two and where different trails are allowed. And as far as I can tell, the charter does not include any language about providing transportation routes. So I think there are some areas of definition that are going to be. Very conflicting and uh, confounding. In our January deliberations.
You know, just say the Longmont um. Bike way, I'm I'm guessing that Mayor Brockett was speaking about this. It's all in uh, the right of way and not on our land and associated with the diagonal.
But it's, it's intended to interchange with, for instance, the IBM Connector Trail. Which goes right through that center block.
And then will increase traffic from there as people use that to.
And have conflicts between class, e-bike class types. Well, I guess some other conflicts coming up, but I don't want to keep the public waiting any longer. Uh, so I'm going to turn. From this, knowing that we'll come back to many of these issues in January during our deliberations and discussion. Um, and ask Allison to open up the public hearing. So that we can hear from the 20 some people who have signed up.
And so there are a lot of questions on are they getting two or three minutes each? We have 24 signed up. Before we've asked, before we asked for hands. To be raised. So it's your.
You want to have people raise their hand now, just to.
Are there any others on, in the meeting who intend to speak for the public hearing on e-bikes? Raise your hand now if you.
If you haven't signed up.
Have not signed up already. And if Allison does not know that you're in the queue.
Yeah, so. I see one additional. Everyone else is already on the list.
Okay.
So 25 total.
25. Okay, so let's give everybody three minutes. I will cut you off at three minutes, so please pay attention to the timer. It may be mid-sentence. But we're going to move right along. And give each of these people three minutes to speak.
And did you say no? Just so the public knows, no combining or did you just sign up?
Yeah, there will be no um.
Cooling.
And and it would be most helpful for us, as those of you who have been listening to the discussion can probably already tell. If you would address. More views on. The e-bikes. Complying with the definition of non-motorized passive recreation. And. If you want to speak about which trails e-bikes should be allowed on, if you would be sure to say why. Just names of trails doesn't give us much information.
If all five of the hands, I have you on the list now, so you can put your hands down and. We'll get to you.
All right, so please go ahead and call on people in order.
Okay, and I just give you, there's a lot on the list and I need to find your name, but we'll start with Neil Henderson and on deck will be David Broad. Let me find Neil. Not seeing. All right, David. You're up and on deck will be Jean Ashenbrenner.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, first, trustees and staff, thank you so much for your service on this and the other important matters. I'm a 25 plus year resident of Boulder. I have regularly voted for all open space. Uh, taxes and yeah, and of course have supported it through my tax dollars and time. Yeah, big supporter. As an aging Boulder athlete, I can't do what I once could. And I feel like I need the assistance of e-bikes to continue to enjoy this recreational activity. Um, yeah, I'm a regular open space user. I'm a climber. I use it for contemplation. I will say that there is no biking trail that is good for contemplation. Uh, you know, as as a hiker, I prefer to be on the trails that that exclude bikes for that. Uh, and my experience is that e-bikes are bikes. And uh, you know, and I think that's what Jeffco has found as well. So I'm in favor of alternative A and in fact, I feel like it doesn't go far enough. Yeah, in the staff analysis for alternative A versus alternative B, they were largely the same. Except for the uh, yeah, the interface with other jurisdictions. And that's precisely the point that we're here to discuss. How should e-bikes be treated? And the way that you decide to treat e-bikes can also influence our neighboring jurisdictions with which we share trails. In terms of which trails we should have, uh, I don't understand why Doughty Draw uh, i- isn't on there. Why is US 93 a dividing line? Uh, it seems like those are important trails that are wide trails. That may it would be suitable for e-bikes as well. I'd also second what was said earlier about Wonderland Lake. It's a key for me as a North Boulder resident to be able to get downtown safely. Uh, without being exposed to excessive auto traffic. Uh, yeah, my alternative in the absence of that is to get in my car and drive and pollute and bring another car downtown. So I'd rather not do that. And finally, I see e-bikes as getting lighter and lighter with every passing month. They, you know, they don't do more damage to the the delta in in weight between an e-bike and a regular bike is less than the delta between. Uh, yeah, two sample bikers. So I don't see how they significantly damage the trails any differently. Thank you very much. I'll give back the remaining time.
Thank you, David.
Okay, Jean. Jean Ashenbrenner and Gary McCallan is on deck.
Okay, I'm Jean Ashenbrenner. I live in Boulder and I've been hiking on Boulder trails for almost 40 years, so even longer than the last speaker. Um, I'd like to, first of all, comment that when I was doing that online evaluation. It felt sort of funny and listening to this conversation, I understand. That the basic assumption that staff was working on is that we want e-bikes on trails. Now we have to decide which trail and we have to decide the alternative. Change city code or dispose of the lands. Which sort of made me uncomfortable because the assumption had already been made that there would be e-bikes. Okay, I also think it's very important to look at outcomes, meaning we're making choices. When we choose to have e-bike. Then something else is going to suffer. So as an older person, I like hiking. One of the things I find is some of the trails have really high steps because they've eroded so much. If money were put into improving those trails as an old person or as anybody. That would make my uh, enjoyment greater. And right now people are going around those steep steps and creating muddy areas around the outside. So if we're spending time evaluating e-bikes. Having more staff hike the trails to check to make sure e-bikes are okay. And I believe that bikes, not just e-bikes, do more damage to trails than walkers do. Then the expense of, and there'll be more bike miles if we have e-bikes. Then more money is going in to support those e-bikes, which is not going in to support the hiking that I like to do so that I can enjoy nature. so that I can enjoy nature. Also, uh, I think a lot of my friends and I have been displaced. And I don't understand why surveys don't show, show that more. But we do not go to Doughty Draw and we do not go to Marshall Mason, even though I really used to like doing that. Because of all the time we have to spend stepping out of the way of a bike. There will be more bikes, more bike miles, put it that way, if we have e-bikes. And so my experience hiking on the trails will not be as good. And last, I'm not convinced that old people, now maybe the previous speaker has lots of experience biking and now it's harder for him to bike further, but there'll be a lot of new people, old people, who can't control the bikes as well and who are gonna fall. Um, and then we'll have to do more rescues, and I think that's gonna be a problem. So thank you very much for your service and for listening.
Thank you, Jean.
Okay, Gary McClelland and on deck is Wendy Sweet.
Hi, Gary McClelland. First, thanks for those who have collected the data and assembled this proposal. I've benefited greatly by informative friendly conversations with Marnie and Topher Downton. I comment from the perspective of a seventy-five-year-old with artificial knees who has lived in Boulder and paid open space taxes for almost fifty years. I've hiked, run and biked most all of the trails and climbed the peaks and flatirons. Now, e-bikes are essential for me to continue to enjoy the open space I've loved. We've talked about displaced users. I, and I can give you a long list of my peers, are displaced now from the open space we used to enjoy because e-bikes are not allowed. Proposal B is a great step forward and I support it. However, I have some issues with it and I would like to suggest some of those. Under B, if I wanted to pull my granddaughter in a trailer with my bike from my house to North Broadway, I cannot use the wide trail behind Wonderland Lake and Foddy Hills Community Park and would instead have to bike on busy Broadway. Of course, I'm not going to do that. And I noticed in the maps tonight, if I were to get out to Boulder Ranch, also I have to go on Broadway, I can't use quite reasonable trails right at the start of my house to get out there. Next, it makes no sense to open canyon and continue to prohibit e-bikes on Chapman, which is a road. We've all seen that infamous video of regular mountain bikers bombing down Walker Ranch Trails. Why is that a more reasonable activity than me biking up Chapman at five miles per hour with pedal assist? Next, there is inadequate, inadequate attention to ADA issues. Many, perhaps most of adults buying e-bikes would qualify to use those bikes as assistive devices on any open space trail. This needs to be widely publicized to prevent aggression from younger riders who will try to enforce the rules. Enforcement will also be a nightmare for rangers trying to decide if the ADA use is legitimate. Next, specialized in track, trek and soon other manufacturers are making the now very old class one, two and three categories obsolete. As an earlier, um, speaker mentioned, they're becoming lighter bikes, less powerful, and they are the ones that should be on the trails. And yet, blind adoption of those, uh, old categories will often prevent that. Proposal B is a giant step forward and be applauded. However, all the issues identified would be resolved by simply adopting proposal A. I urge you to do that. Thank you.
Thanks, Gary.
Okay, Wendy Sweet and on deck is Rachel Fussell.
Hi, I'm Wendy Sweet, thirty-year Boulder resident, and I'm the executive director of the Boulder Mountain Bike Alliance, BMA. I'm speaking on behalf of our board of directors. We appreciate the work that has been done by OSMP staff on the e-biking alternatives evaluation to arrive at the recommendation for alternative B. BMA agrees with staff recommendation that the OSMP charter should be amended to include e-biking as a passive recreational activity permissible on open space and only allowed on certain designated trails. We see an opportunity for increased regional commuter and recreational bike connectivity with e-bike access to wide multi-use paths such as the Boulder Canyon Trail, Cottonwood Trail and the South Boulder Creek Trail. The Boulder County Parks and Open Space e-bike study found both class one and class two e-bikes are compatible with these kinds of crushed gravel, soft surface paths. Currently, there are only three miles of single track open to e-bikes in all of Boulder County in El Dorado Canyon State Park. We strongly suggest that OSMP, Boulder County and the Forest Service work together with the community to determine appropriate trails for e-bikes in Boulder County. BMA's focus is to ensure that single-track trails open to mountain bikes and potential changes to their access are done thoughtfully. BMA believes further community outreach, education onsite with demo bikes and a pilot program are necessary to understanding the potential impacts of both class one and class two e-bikes on OSMP single-track trails. BMA's member survey shows feelings about e-mountain bikes are mixed but skew positive. BMA does not feel that there's a wide majority consensus that BMA can speak either for or against e-bike access. Mountain bikers, like all public land visitors, have different opinions on preferred trails, terrain and equipment. And as such, we cannot lump all people who ride bikes on public land into one homogeneous group. What BMA does support is a thoughtful, open, fair and transparent public process for this and other public land cons, access considerations. Since our founding, equitable access for mountain bikers is still a top priority for BMA and our members. BMA's request for additional studies should not be taken as a negative view towards e-bikes. We believe a more robust and on-the-ground approach will better address the concerns of OSBT members and of the community. BMA is ready to assist OSMP with any additional research necessary to move forward with this proposal. Thank you.
Thanks, Wendy.
Okay, Rachel. You are up and on deck is Marky, Marky LaCombe.
Hello, my name is Rachel Fussell. I am, I'm coming tonight on behalf of People for Bikes Coalition. Um, we are based here in Boulder and our staff lives and utilizes the multi-use paths and trails both in Boulder and in the surrounding communities, including the OSMP trails. Um, I wanted to support the work that's been done by the City of Boulder Open Space and Mountain Park staff on the e-biking alternatives evaluation to arrive at your recommendation for alternative B. We certainly see an opportunity for increased regional bike connectivity with class one and class two electric bicycle access to wide crushed surface multi-use paths and trails that are predominantly used for commuting. Um, however, we do support access for only class one pedal-assist electric mountain bikes on single-track trails where mountain bikes are already allowed. Um, and I also agree with Wendy Sweet and BMA that a pilot electric bicycle access project could help to better understand these impacts and propose changes on these. Um, again, that is not to say that we, um, think negatively of e-bikes in any ways. We also believe and have been working with our partners in the US Forest Service. So to talk about displacement issues, there was a NIPA analysis, environmental analysis that was done by the US Forest Service and Tahoe National Forest. I'm happy to send that study, but they concluded that after they allowed class one electric mountain bikes on single-track natural surface trails that there, that were open and currently used by mountain biking enthusiasts and hikers, there was not measurably altered current patterns of use. And it did not create any additional displacement of other user groups that currently recreated on those trails. Um, as well as compared to comparative speed data. We've also seen that they are, the speed is, is the same for all of them on downhill, uphill and flat sections of trails in this study. Um, so I encourage you to look at other studies that have been done across the country, including by national, federal land managers, as well as local communities like Jeffco and others. Um, and all that to be said that while there may be individuals practicing irresponsible trail use, this is not the case for whole communities or user groups. There are several studies that also show that riders of e-bikes and analog bicycles display similar safety behavior while riding. As well as, um, the use of the electric mountain bikes and e-bikes are getting lighter, the components are similar. Therefore, this should be a passive use to help those who cannot continue to recreate by walking. And again, the pedal assist is just that, it, the bicycle ceases to stop moving once you stop pedaling. And with a throttle, um, they can use cargo bikes and others to actually commute, which helps to contribute to a better climate situation for our communities.
Thank you, Rachel.
Okay, Marky. And on deck is Joe Hare.
Hi, I'm Marky LaCombe, I live down in South Boulder. I want to express a very strong disapproval of the open space and mountain park staff's recommendation that e-bikes be redefined as non-motorized passive recreation. This is really an absurdity. And what on earth is that electric battery for if not to be a kind of motor, uh, even if it's pedal assist? And how passive can riding a bicycle be even if it's an assisted bike? I think this kind of cynical wordsmithing not only is totally unnecessary to the problem at hand, which is whether or not to allow e-bikes on Boulder County trails, but it also opens the door to further absurdities like redefining all electric cars as non-motorized passive conveyances and allowing them on the trails. So I would advise against redefining e-bikes into something that they're not. That said, I'm not against e-bikes at all. Uh, but I think it's important that decisions about e-bike accessibility should be decided with the characteristics of the particular trail and its surroundings taken into account. And that argues against having decisions about the trails being made by the city manager, who is not an expert on trail characteristics. And so I am dead set against giving responsibility to the city manager or her office for that. Some trails could be a really useful way to commute to work or from town to town or even from North Boulder to South Boulder. For example, there's a lot of utility in allowing e-bikes on regional trails like the Lobo Trail connecting Boulder with Longmont. E-b, e-bikes would make possible the use of this trail by commuters who lack the physical capacity to commute such a long distance on a totally people, people-powered bike. It's wider, flatter and less likely to cause bike-on-bike or bike-on-people collisions. So I favor alternative C. But other trails that were listed, such as the White Rocks, Teller Farm and parts of South Boulder Creek Trails are very narrow. In some places, they're too narrow for two people to walk abreast, much less to accommodate both pedestrians or bikes of any kind. They also wind through fragile habitat and they're widely used by bird watchers and photographers whose personal safety would be endangered by bikes, which are in fact motorized vehicles. People who are watching birds are not likely to be watching very carefully as to an approaching vehicle who is likely to run them over. So I don't favor alternative A. Also, the existing patterns on trails should be considered. I've stopped walking on a lot of trails, including much of the Bobbling Trail, the Boulder Canyon Trail and others, because the traffic has increased on these, were bicycles exponentially. So it not only creates a safety hazard, but it diminishes the capacity of pedestrians to enjoy a nice walk in nature. And I will send the rest of my comments to the open space board.
Thank you, Marky.
Okay, Joe and on deck is Robert, I mean.
Hi, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Uh, my name's Joe Hare. I've lived in North Boulder for eight and a half years. I moved here with my family in part because I love the outdoors, hiking, snowshoeing and especially mountain biking. I've been a mountain biker for thirty years and a knee biker now for three. Uh, and I love how e-bikes make trail experiences more social and more acceptable for people or accessible for people of all ages and abilities. This last summer, I spent fifty-six hours volunteering with the Boulder Mountain Bike Alliance to lead group e-mountain bike rides and, uh, it was a great experience. Youngest rider who came as a teenager, the oldest was in his seventies. Lots of riders were over fifty. Um, there were several who had injuries and had to stop mountain biking, but e-bikes allowed them to get on again. And all these people, different ages, abilities, injuries, were able to ride together and enjoy a social experience on the trails, which to me is what mountain biking and, you know, being outdoors is at its best. Uh, and the entire time, we did not have a single negative interaction with any other trail user on any ride. Uh, unfortunately, because of the e-bike regulations in Boulder City and Boulder County, we had to drive our bikes all the way to Jefferson County to do those rides illegally, which wastes time, it's money, causes pollution. I, I hate to have to do that. I wish we could e-bike on all of the trails here in Boulder where we live. I also have two sons and they're with me here tonight and I've shared my love of mountain biking with them. The challenge, you know, with kids is that it's tough for all of us to ride together because of our different fitness levels. But I've gotten e-bikes for them and that allows us to ride together in a way that's fun for everyone. But we still have to drive a long ways to do it and I would much rather ride together in Boulder. Uh, I only have two and a half years left with my oldest son. Uh, and, and I would rather drive to Jefferson County and do that and not miss out on the opportunity. But I'm hoping this process might lead to some change here. So, real quick, let me let them speak before we run out of time.
Hi, I'm Josh. I'm fifteen and I'm a student at Boulder High.
Um, I'm Declan, I'm twelve and I'm a student at Summit Middle School.
We really love biking with this family. We go every weekend and it's our special time with our dad and together. And then I'm planning on volunteering next summer to help build the new North Sky Trail in their house and I'm really excited to build that for the community after they build trails for me.
And I would love it if we could ride together, me, my, me, my brother and my dad on our e-bike, on our e-bikes when it's complete.
Thank you very much.
Okay, I'm not seeing Robert. So Robert, if you're here under a different name, you can raise your hand or message, uh, me in the Q and A. We'll move on to Peter Russell and then Sally Ringwood on deck. Okay, Peter.
Yes, I'm assuming you can hear me now. Thank you. I have submitted written comments to the board highlighting six myths associated with mountain biking and what I believe to be the facts, refuting those myths. Instead of going through each one of those, uh, I would encourage the board members to review those comments and I have other comments to make. Uh, I have been mountain biking, uh, not for commuting, but for recreation on natural surface single-track trails for over thirty years. I am, uh, pushing my, I, I'm in my late sixties pushing seventy. A couple of years ago, I had open heart surgery and, um, that led me to purchase an e-bike. And I have attributed my ability to continue riding, uh, toward much of my physical recovery from the surgery that I had a couple of years ago. And I ride regularly with, uh, men and women in their sixties, seventies and yes, even their eighties, including their late eighties. And, um, many of these people were better athletes in their prime than I ever was, but, uh, due to the ravages of age or infirmity have, um, you know, now have to rely upon using some form of assist, some form of pedal assist in their mountain biking to continue to do what they've enjoyed doing for all of these years. I would like to recommend, uh, a modification to what's been proposed, not just alternative B, but a modification to allow, uh, those who are seniors or that disabled in some fashion to be able to ride on all trails, the alternative A trails. And it's easily demonstrated either through a driver's license or a driver's license with, um, a placard or with a written registration form. Those of you who have been disabled know that you don't just get a placard, but you also get a registration form that, um, so it's like showing a regular registration and so it's easy to monitor. And allow those people, those of us who are older, to continue riding on trails that are already permitted for regular mountain bikes so that we can continue riding with our friends on the trails that we, that we love. We're not the problem. We're not the ones that have user conflicts with, uh, with other hikers or bikers or requestrians. We're older, we're just trying to be able to maintain, uh, a certain status quo in our ability to recreate and enjoy the things that we like. So that's my, uh, request is a. So that's my request is a reasonable accommodation here for, would be to allow seniors and those who can demonstrate some form of disability to ride on all of the trails that are permitted under alternative A. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter. Sally Greenwood, and up next is Chuck Sanson.
Hello. I'm Sally Greenwood. I live on Shanahan Ridge, fortunately, next to biking areas. I support compatible use of trails everywhere, and I'm among the 70% hikers who use trails. Perhaps I'll join the 26% who ride bicycles. However, I'm concerned about safety. And the White Rock Trail comes to mind as being too narrow to support bicycles and pedestrians. I'm deaf. I don't hear so well. And the fact that people approach at 15 or 20 miles an hour is quite unnerving. And I'm bothered by the statement on page 13 of the memo that says, let's see. OSMP sees no problem with speed. Do not anticipate that e-biking will require unique enforcement strategies such as establishing forcing speed limits. That makes me nervous. I would like that thought to be addressed by planning. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. But I'm sorry, was she for or against, or did she pick an alternative?
I think she raised concerns.
All right, Chuck, you're up, and on deck is Andrew Bernstein.
Fantastic. Thank you. Hi, I'm Chuck Sanson, 35-year Boulder resident and also a 35-year cyclist here in Boulder. I've been involved in the cycling industry, having started a shop here in Boulder, worked for many organizations, both philanthropic and as my job that's been able to support my family, raise my children, and all throughout that, enjoy the trails throughout Boulder. Being an aging cyclist who enjoys all aspects of the outdoors, including cycling, skiing, hiking with my family on a daily basis and living in South Boulder, I enjoy riding both analog bikes, which is what we e-bikers call them nowadays, and e-bikes. E-bikes, I can say, after riding them for six years, present some unique and beneficial differences, many of those which have already been highlighted today by many of the people. First of all, they promote camaraderie on the trails. And I'd like to talk about that in terms of the philosophy behind them. In riding analog bikes for so long, you quickly realize that your goal on an analog bike is to go faster and faster, to enjoy the trails at a higher rate of speed, to in fact not only beat yourself with your time that you did yesterday, but perhaps beat your friends as well. It's one of the most enjoyable aspects of mountain biking, and many people enjoy this aspect of it. With e-bikes, there is very little competition within the people who ride them. Why? Because the motors have no egos. E-bikes in Class 1 and Class 2 cut out at most 20 miles an hour. However, the way those bikes are constructed, the industry has made them so that they cut out at anywhere from 16 to 18 miles an hour. If you've ridden a normal bike, and as part of the studies show, e-bikes go no faster than normal analog bikes, especially on flat trails or on the downhills. And in fact, both those cases, e-bikes go slower than analog bikes. So when we look at terms of enjoying the trails with e-bikes, the differences really come down to how the trails are enjoyed. And that comes down, as I mentioned before, to the camaraderie and the enjoyment of the outdoors. And so in summary, I'd like to advocate for the option A because I feel that through experience, you learn that the riders are the same, the equipment is the same, and fundamentally, the trails are the same. If bicycles are already allowed on these trails, allowing e-bikes on the trails present no difference in either rider conflict or trail degradation. That's what the studies show, and I would appreciate it if the City of Boulder and the Open Space Board take them into account. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Chuck. Okay, Andrew, you're up, and on deck is Kathleen Ashworth.
Good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Yes, we can.
First of all, thank you very much to the trustees for their time and commitment to our open spaces, and thanks to the staff for all the work that you all did to protect the incredible natural resources that we have here in Boulder. I am attending this meeting as an adaptive athlete. I am paraplegic. I was assaulted by a driver here in Boulder in 2019, which resulted in partial paralysis. And I now use an e-bike to remain active. I've always been a cyclist, and for a few months there in 2019, when I clung to life at Denver Health, I wasn't sure that I would ever ride again. Thanks to e-bikes, I'm now able to enjoy cycling in a way that is surprisingly similar to how I used to ride when I was able-bodied. And I'm very grateful for the fact that the ADA allows me as a disabled person to have pretty broad access to the trail system here in Boulder and always has. And the decision that you all make probably won't have any impact on me personally. However, I feel strongly that the e-bike is a tool that can be used by many people, as we've heard this evening, to promote access to our natural resources for people who are no longer physically able, not through a process of trauma, but through just a process of aging. I would, however, like to make a request, and I appreciated the comments earlier in the meeting from the representative of the Rangers about enforcement. However, I think it's very important that Rangers be, Rangers, anyone in charge of enforcement, be up to speed on the what is allowable under the ADA, where e-bikes are allowed, and who's allowed to have them. And not just that, but also that the OSMP takes steps to educate the public. My personal nightmare scenario is when I'm riding my bike on a place where they may not be allowed for an able-bodied person, and someone stops me and gives me a hard time about having the bike, and I have to explain, hey, this is my disabled. That's an invasive conversation, a very deeply personal conversation, and not always one that I want to have when I'm just out trying to get some exercise. So I hope that when you're redoing signage on the trails, that messaging is included to inform the public that there is ADA access that may be different from access for the general public. With that, I'd just like to reiterate my thanks to everyone for your thoughtful approach to this topic, and look forward to seeing more access for e-bikes on our trails. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Andrew. Kathleen. Okay, Kathleen, and on deck is Twig Earl.
My name is Kathleen Ashworth. I moved to Boulder in 1996. I am retired. I am 75 years old, and I'm opposed to e-biking on all OSMP trails. Why? I find that many mountain bikers do not announce when they are passing me when I'm hiking, or they announce when they're nearly on top of me or a few inches from me. Allowing e-bikes would add to the number of bikes on the trail, meaning that more bikers would not be announcing their presence when passing. I find that fearful. In summary, e-biking on OSMP trails is a safety concern for me. Please do not approve e-bikes on OSMP trails, and thank you for considering my concerns. That's all I had to say.
Thank you, Kathleen. I don't see Twig. There is one phone number, so if you called in and you are Twig, Robert, Neil, you can raise your hand by pressing star nine. And well, now that you've signed up to speak, Lorraine Fountain. I don't see Lorraine, Richard Harris. Okay, Richard, you're up, and Marcus Poppins is on deck.
I've just unmuted.
We can hear you.
Pardon?
We can hear you.
Thank you. So first of all, I'm a board member at Plan Boulder County, and the co-chairs of Plan Boulder have sent you all a memo, I think, yesterday. You got it, hopefully, with a bunch of very good points. And my intention today is to just add a little bit to that. My first comment, and it's, my first comment is that I think Dave Koontz at the last meeting thoroughly demolished the credibility of all the statistical surveys of people that have been done. And for you to put out a memo today that features them at the beginning of the memo is an insult to the intelligence of the community. And I suggest that that flawed kind of thinking be removed in the future. The second thing that is absurd is to try to classify e-bikes as passive. E-bikes are powered by a motor. All three classes that are listed have a maximum speed of 20 miles an hour. And if you take a e-bike, which might weigh as much as 50 pounds, maybe they're coming down in weight, I don't know. But you add to that a 100 to 200-pound rider, you have quite a bit of momentum coming down a hill that could seriously injure somebody. The second thing, the third thing, rather, is about the class. Because they all, all three classes have the same high-speed capability, it doesn't matter to me particularly what the class is. Given the weight of the rider and so on, we ought to be looking at stopping distances rather than speed distances. 20 miles an hour is just too, too fast. So and then in listening to the discussion at the last meeting and the discussion tonight, it seems to me that the board members are not all in agreement and that there is not a cogent plan anywhere close to completion for delivery to the city council. So I'd like to just say to you all that I can't conceive of your making a recommendation in early January that you would send to the city council with any kind of useful thing to do. And you don't want to insult their intelligence by sending them a partially completed package. So thank you so much, and I'll look forward to how this continues.
Thank you, Richard. Okay, Marcus and Brad, I realize you're Brad Fountain, probably under Lorraine Fountain. So Brad, you'll be after Marcus.
Okay, are you able to hear me?
Yes, we can.
All right, thank you so much for your time. I want to thank you all for bringing facts and user surveys and information to this conversation because even in our own bike community, this conversation gets so weighted in emotion and personal experience that I think it's really more about what is the broad community looking to do. So thank you for bringing surveys. I know people have dissed on those. It's not cool. I would like to just talk about, I'm primarily a mountain biker. I have just recently, in about the past three years, started e-biking some. And I was really surprised at how very similar it is and experienced to mountain biking and how it brings the same joy to me and people who do it that mountain biking brings. And I don't ride it very much because most of my friends frankly don't yet have them. So it's a very seldom thing for me. But I can definitely see as I get older, shifting more and more in that direction. And to that end, I've had a few friends that have switched entirely to e-bikes because they are not capable of riding normal bikes or analog bikes or however you want to call them on some of these trails. And so it really becomes an equity issue for me to where, who am I to say that they can't ride the trails in a similar experience that I can ride on a normal bike because they have bad knees or bad hips, or they just aren't in shape enough to do it, and whatever the reason may be. And then when I look at the proposal, the first question that popped into my head was, why are we not going for option A? Because where these folks need to use the e-bike the most is on the other side of 93, where the hills are steeper, and they're not able to ride those hills as easily as they can on the other side. So when I look at it from a pure equity play of where can my friends ride their bikes and where can they continue that experience? It is on the area that is actually not recommended in the suggested route, and that concerned me. And then when I went digging for the reason, I can't find a reason other than we're trying to comply with what local land managers are doing. But if I look directly south to Jeffco, which is probably the closest trail system in the contingent land management area, they allow e-bikes. And so that seems like a not very great reason to tell a lot of my friends that they can't ride on those trails as they used to. So I appreciate your time. I don't have much more to say than that, other than I do support, obviously, e-bikes. I support option A because it seems like the broadest equitable use for people to be able to use these devices to get out on the trails and take it from there. Oh, actually, one last comment on the speed issue. I actually go slower downhill on my e-bike because it's harder to maneuver, and it tops out at 20 miles per hour, so I end up riding slower downhill. I don't know if that's a comfort to anyone or not, but just putting it out there is a fact. All right, thank you.
Okay, Brad, and up next is Catherine Harris.
Yes, hi, thanks for the opportunity to speak. My wife and I are in our 70s, and we ride e-bikes. Riding e-bikes is our primary source of exercise and recreation. I rode mountain bikes for about 20 years all over Colorado before we purchased e-bikes of our own in order to extend our riding years. One of the arguments people might have against e-bikes on non-paved trails is that they cause more damage and trail erosion. It is my experience that this is absolutely not true. E-bikes are not motorcycles, they're bicycles, as many have stated in the speakers that preceded me. Additionally, some of the opinion that some are of the opinion that e-bikes pose a threat to hikers and other trail users because they go faster than standard bicycles. My Class 1 e-bike with no throttle has a top pedaling speed of 20 miles an hour, which is no faster than I can pedal a standard bicycle even at my age. I have witnessed many times over cyclists on regular bikes showing very poor trail manners. It's not about the bikes, it's about the riders. My opinion is that e-bike should be allowed on all trails where standard bicycles are allowed without exception. Alternative B is not an adequate option, adding only 30-something miles of trail access compared to the 150-ish miles of total OSMP trails. It's unfair and unreasonable to restrict e-bikes compared to regular bicycles. Please don't allow people without firsthand cycling experience to determine e-bike trail access. Thank you.
Thanks, Brad. Catherine, and on deck is Jeff Hanlon.
Hey, I'm Catherine Harris, and I've lived in Boulder almost 50 years. I've loved bikes. I've biked through college, through graduate school. Five years commuting on bikes, and probably some less regularly. And I just went on a e-bike trip in Spain for a week this spring and loved it. Despite all that, number one, I see no, I don't understand how people can manipulate the fact that e-bike is not passive, passive recreation, which is in. the the chapter about open space. I feel like it's cynical manipulation of of a word. They're not passive. They they go faster. 85% of people I believe that use open space are walkers and hikers. E-bikes can go as fast as 20 miles an hour. Walkers go something like two, two miles an hour. That's a big disparity. Other people have spoken to the fact that bicyclers will come up behind you and I have that experience and the the trail that I'm speaking to that I have most experience to is the South Boulder Creek Trail. And it is wide and and I walk with a friend and we're talking and a bicycle will come up. Maybe saying something right at the time they're even with us. And so, you know, you have to jump off the trail. And I don't, I feel like anybody's going to be the same, the same problem. Let me see. I think that's that's my my main problem is the safety problem and especially as you get older and don't hear as well and you don't react as fast. I think the safety issue is really important. I am interested in the ADA issue. I personally just don't know how to accommodate that. I heard one speaker, you know, talk about having proof of ADA need. I think it's important. But I I don't know how to deal with that.
Thank you, Catherine. And the staff and the Open Space Board of Trustees will be addressing the ADA requirements and those kinds of uses separately from this deliberation.
Oh, good.
Okay, I don't see Jeff Hamlin. So we'll go to Alan Dale and on deck is Suzanne Webble.
Okay. My name's Alan Dale. I would like to offer my views and experience of 25 years of hiking and occasionally cycling on Boulder open space trails. Over those 25 years, I've walked on open space trails, several that are shared with bicycles. And this has been an average of five days a week over that time. Recently, I observed observed that the trails west of Broadway and North Boulder, such as the Foothills Trail, are periodically used by e-bikes and other motorized electrical conveyances despite the current rules. In my view, e-bikes or bikes in general, unfortunately, due to a minority of riders are often incompatible with the other 75 plus percent of trail users such as walkers, hikers. And that incompatibility boils down to bikes speeding past hikers at speeds of 15 or 20 miles an hour. This is potentially perilous to the hiker and the rider, promotes a climate of danger for the hiker and thereby degrades experience for all trail users, I would argue even for the bikers. Moreover, many e-bike models have wider tires than analog bikes. And in dry conditions, I've observed them leaving an even longer cloud of dust for hikers to walk through and breathe in. The health concerns created by that condition of dust and the stress of potential high speed collisions it seems to me would be exacerbated by more frequent frequent bicycle use of any kind on trails. And by the way, these drive-by incidents do not result in reportable conflicts because the hikers are in the rearview mirror. For the aforementioned reasons, my wish is that the Open Space Board decline to recommend e-bikes and other high speed motorized conveyances on open space trails. I suggest that if e-bikes are to be permitted on some open space trails, it seems e-bikes are best limited to paved routes that are wide enough to accommodate all planned forms of transportation. And where there is a shared use of hikers, the speed limit for all bikes be set below 15 miles an hour. In my view, I do not see the overall benefit of allowing of allowing e-bikes on what patterns of use demonstrate to be primarily hiking trails. This seems especially true where there's a parallel safe paved option within one third of a mile, which appears may soon be the case for much of North Boulder after the improvements on North Broadway. Finally, whichever plan is implemented, it would be useful to have a follow-up surveys and avenues for public input of their experience with the increased e-bikes usage on open space trails, particularly on paved trails. It seems there should also be space in the surveys for input on a lot of other electrical conveyances that will likely show up such as one wheels.
Thank you, Alan. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Okay, last four, Suzanne Webble and then Jeff Curry.
Hi, Suzanne Webble, 5735 Prospect Road, Longmont. I'm trained. You may be surprised that I have actually ridden e-bikes. I'm not here to object to them. I've ridden on the St. Brain Greenway from Longmont Sandstone Ranch. I've ridden all the way up Vell Pass from Frisco. And most recently, I did the entire 21 mile Colchester Causeway, which is a rail trail in Burlington, Vermont. They're fun and they definitely allow geezers like me to do things I could no longer do if it weren't for the e-bikes. However, they are not just bikes. It's the people on the bikes that are different. My experience is that everybody was hooping and hollering and laughing and shouting and carrying on and having a wonderful time. And that is not the experience that most of us appreciate on O S M P. Having said that, I don't want to just say they shouldn't be allowed, but I think an easier way to look at this than what you've considered is to allow them on wide gravel paved or not improved surface trails that are wide enough for two people of any kind of persuasion to pass each other. But they should not be allowed on single track trails anywhere on O S M P. To me, that means they should not be on dowdy draw. They should not be on the left-hand trail. And it might be okay if they were on a cottonwood trail or community ditch or lobo. Those are just some examples since you asked for our input on that. I I do have a fundamental concern with just cavalierly calling an e-bike a passive recreation method of getting around open space. I don't think it is passive because I think it does have a motor and I have a problem going about about this classification. I am concerned that e-bikes will increase visitor conflicts. And I'm concerned that they will increase trail erosion, especially on our fragile soils. But I don't know that. So I would recommend that you conduct a pilot project for a year. This is not ripe for decision right now, in my opinion. Do it for a year, pick a few trails, see how it goes. And then come back and let's resume this conversation about e-bikes or not. So there you have it. My two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Okay, Jeff Curry, then Lynn Siegel, and then Evan Rabbits.
Jeff, I just have to ask you, are you the same Jeff Curry that we've already heard for three minutes?
You sure you are correct? I I was gonna wait till the very end if there was time. I just have a couple of things. It was great to listen to everybody else. I think I can knit some things together for us, but I would go last. If that's if that's good. Okay.
Leah, can you, are you, can you move it back?
Yes.
Okay, Lynn, you're up.
I don't know why there's even a discussion about passive. Can you hear me? Passive versus active. It's not legally defensible to call an active bike, a passive bike. It's not. So why is anyone even talking about it? The other thing is I don't know how this works, but I just assumed that when people pass on a trail that if they're passing pedestrians, they have to get off their bike and walk around. Is that not the case? That's unbelievable to me. Bikers can just offset a pedestrian and they just have to jump off the trail? That's inconceivable that that's ever been the case. I guess it is. So it's definitely not okay. You know, this is all about the money. After CU South passed, I'm afraid we missed the boat. There's not enough money after CU South and and the development going on in Boulder. It's extracting all the resources that we have to build dual track for bikes and people to work at the same time. And how are you going to get enforcement of people to get off their bikes when they pass pedestrians? That's probably going to be tough. No one should be on Rocky Flats, not on a bike, not anywhere near there. Long distance trails. That's really great for people to be riding. I was stunned to hear that people are throwing their bikes on their car to go bike riding somewhere. Like, why can't they ride their electric bike? Can't they ride on the roads or on the shoulder or something to get to their destination? That's kind of stunning. And if people want to go faster, if it's a big competition thing, let them go to the gym. Leave it for the people who want to be outdoors and appreciate our our open space, not the people that want to, as Susan put, hoop and howl and get all excited. Let them go to a party if they want to get excited. Or go to the gym if they have some big passion for being faster.
Thank you very much, Lynn.
Okay, Evan.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, I'm Evan Rabbits. I've been cycling here 44 years. I started the petition and process that got city council to legalize e-bikes on the multi-use trails in 2013. Certainly, e-bikes should be allowed on Chapman Drive, Wonderland Lake Trail and Canyon Trails. They're all nice and wide. The Wonderland Lake and Canyon Trails are important transportation corridors. And Chapman is basically empty now. I think the solution to the potential problem with type three e-bikes on the lobo trail using trails rated for type two bikes is to use a speed limit instead of classifications, just like with cars. We don't prohibit high-powered Teslas in alleys, but everyone has to go slow. Each path deserves its own speed limits depending on how crowded, how wide, how rough, et cetera, it is. Narrow crowded trails shouldn't have any more traffic. So I support a great deal of what Suzanne Webble was saying where we have to try things out and have an iterative process and see, you know, which trails are too narrow to have any more traffic? Which trails should have a 10 mile an hour speed limit or a 15 or a 20? These things can all be adjusted. Shouldn't be set in stone. So I guess that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you, Evan.
Okay, that's it. And if you want Jeff Curry.
Well, we are now 15, 10 minutes, 15 minutes from our adjournment and we have another agenda item still to address. So I'm going to call an end to this hearing. And and I'd like to invite Jeff as well as anyone else who has additional points to make to please send us an email at osbt-web.
At boldercolorado.gov.
At boldercolorado.gov if you didn't hear Leah. And also at our January 11th meeting, we will begin with an open comment period with either two or three minutes per person. So if you'd like to come back and speak again, that's your opportunity to speak. We will not have more public hearing time, but we will have, as we do at the beginning of every meeting, an open comment period. So and I would also like to invite the OSB team members. If you have any additional questions or requests for data from staff before the January meeting, to please email Dan and Marty.
You can just email me and I'll get it to the right people.
Within the next day or two and he'll make sure that it gets to the appropriate staff. Anything else about e-bikes? Okay, Dan, agenda item, where are we?
All right, I guess we're no break in it tonight, huh? Oh, yep.
Three minutes, right? Yes, I'm here.
Three minute break and Chris will get you set up and and ready to roll.
No break for Chris.
John Carroll.
Wait, ready.
All right, we're moving into matters from the department and we have one item for tonight. And we have a program update from our vegetation stewardship program and Chris Warner, our vegetation stewardship senior manager is going to be providing an overview of this work and some of the work they're doing. And giving us kind of a status of what's going on at vegetation management. So with that, I'm gonna turn my computer over and turn it over to Chris Warner.
Great.
Great. Thanks, Chris.
Yeah, thanks for having me. I see you have 75 minutes on the agenda, so. It'll be somewhere between 7.5 and 7. So yeah, thanks for the opportunity. I gave an update about a year ago. So this is a chance to kind of catch up and give you a little bit of background on what we're doing and where we're at and where we're going. So hit the slide. I thought I'd start with a little bit of introductions, I guess, about what makes up our vegetation stewardship program at Open Space About Parks. So we have three programs within vegetation stewardship, veg management. A piece of this is our integrated pest management, our weed management. Sort of a dressed up name a little bit, but Kelly Ewing is our supervisor within this program area. Kelly's got a little over a year under her belt with the with the department, so really hit the ground running. And then she's supported by Nick and John and Steve, who are really out there running the crews, getting the work done on the ground. For forest management, all that work goes through my Stein vice, who's our forest operations supervisor. And Cook, who is one of our crew leads, has just recently left the department, unfortunately. So we'll be refilling his position soon. And then Chris Dieroff, who's been with the department and with our forestry program for over 10 years at this point. So a lot of great on the ground resources in forestry. Then ecological restoration, the small but mighty crew, and that's kind of an ongoing theme here, but ecological restoration, Megan Bowes, our senior restoration ecologist, and then works with Kevin. They also have a crew that getting a lot done in the field in a variety of projects, working with virtually every work group within the department. So a diverse team, a diverse list of projects. And just, you know, great people that I a diverse team, a diverse list of projects, and just, you know, great people that I have the the fortune to work with on a day-to-day basis. All right. All those folks are standard. So what do we do? You know, there there's kind of some general definitions here about kind of what what these programs cover, but a lot of it, you know, is outlined in the in the title, Vegetation Stewardship. Everything from weed management, invasive species, invasive plant species, or forest management. This picture is from the N-Car fire. Our forestry crew is is both kind of our our thinning resource, as well as a big piece of our fire resource. Restoring those those native ecosystems in the forested areas of of open space mountain parks, really implementing our forest ecosystem management plan. And then restoration, assisting the recovery of ecosystems that have been damaged, degraded, or destroyed across the open space system. That's, you know, in in a nutshell, what they're doing. They're, you know, addressing everything from forest to grassland to wetland areas across open space mountain parks. And then a few just kind of highlights there, using science-based monitoring and inventories to make our decisions. That's an ongoing theme you'll see through through these slides. Really measuring and tracking what we're doing and making sure we're hitting our targets as far as a lot of that work goes. And then, like I said, really implementing what we've got laid out in our plans, whether it be our forest plan, grassland plan, master plan. You know, really trying to get that work done on the ground to to meet those goals of those those management plans. So then I'd work through each one of our each one of our programs and just give you some highlights from twenty twenty-two. Really what we got done in a year, kind of some comparisons to twenty twenty-one, and then build on it and kind of give you some highlights for what we have planned for twenty twenty-three. But starting with our vegetation management program, it's a little hard to see on our screen here, but that's a photo of the veg management crew doing some restoration in the Lindsay ponds. But as as Dan said, I wanted to highlight the the crews because they're the ones out there doing the work, getting this stuff done, sweating, you know, blood, sweat, and tears out out of the system. This group was made up of seven temporary crew members and three assistant crew leads, so total of ten plus the four standards that I that I already mentioned. They really ran for about a nine-month season. That's been kind of our our operating procedure for a lot of these crews is trying to get as much field work done as possible. In twenty twenty-two, we received about eighty thousand dollars in grants, specifically from the Colorado Department of Ag on, you know, noxious weed focused funding, as well as some federal funding. So you can see that was up from our twenty twenty-one, and we've got a similar grant ask in for twenty twenty-three. So lots of money coming in to to supplement what our budget budget numbers look like. And then a few quick numbers. There there won't be a test on this, but fifty thousand individual listed plants pulled. Yes, they do count them as they go. This is really, you know, those listed, so Purple Loose Drive, hairy willow herb, Mediterranean sage. And in this case, it's it's good to see these numbers dropping. There've been kind of a consistent decrease in the the number of plants that we're pulling each year. That basically amounted to about five thousand acres of treatments across the system. So again, everything from grasslands to forest to wetland areas are getting addressed, you know, weeds, no no boundaries. So working in all the ecosystems across open space mountain parks. We also have tried to ramp up our invasive species mapping. So we use a a modified technique from Montana State University. It's called RAM mapping or Rapid Assessment Mapping for our invasive species. This year, we covered about twenty-two hundred acres in some really key areas. You know, we we focused on Marshall Mesa because it was post-fire. And get a, you know, kind of a pre-base line, post-fire of what came up. The Lindsay area, as well as draw them out, some real high ecological areas on the system, as well as areas that we've consistently had ongoing invasive species issues. So and then another, you know, kind of key to to all of our work is collaborative efforts, both within the the open space department, but then is across boundaries as much as possible. So working with crews from the Department of Ag, Boulder County, we addressed the beach shared property, Jefferson County, we spent more than a week with their crews on the Lippenkopf property, WRV, N-Car, Longmont Conservation District, Ready to Work is a big one, and then also working with volunteers, you know, the force multipliers out there as much as we can to get as much work done on the ground. So one project I wanted to highlight, and this is one that we've all talked about multiple times over the years, but the Tall Oak Grass grazing in the Shanahan area. This is a project that we started about in twenty thirteen with that Bear Canyon enclosure that you see in the top left of the map. That was kind of the initial grazing within this area. And over the past two or three years, we've expanded the grazing opportunities within Shanahan Ridge, and we have about five hundred acres of enclosures. Really focused on Tall Oak Grass and and shifting these areas that have been dominated by Tall Oak Grass back to more native vegetation communities. One addition that we made in twenty twenty-two was the Outlaw D, which is basically the mixed stain property you see in red on the map. This has been an ongoing, you know, kind of focus within the area because it's, you know, it's 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 a complicated area, honestly. You look at those areas and, you know, you can see in the pictures, the fencing between open space and the private property is within five feet, two feet, you know, three feet of of the porches and patios of those those folks. So really trying to account for some of the concerns from the neighbors, but then also addressing, you know, the fact that we've got this little inholding of Tall Oak Grass that once again, can just just blow over the fence if we don't address it. So we got creative in this area, used some temporary fencing, some cow sitting, you know, just putting staff out there for for three days and and let the cows do their work. And you can see in the pictures, you know, kind of the before and after. One other kind of add benefit, obviously, to the grazing, and you can see in the photos is the the treatment of fuels, you know, played a a direct impact in the N-Car fire. And I think it maybe changed some neighbors' minds in that area as far as, well, maybe cows aren't so bad, and maybe we can find some find some acceptance within within those areas. Next slide. So I'll move on to forest management now. Within forest management, we had eight temporary crew members in twenty twenty-two. That's up by two. In twenty twenty-two, we we continue to expand our forestry crews. Again, fire seems to be a focus of folks. So again, we we try to kind of add to this each year. Twelve thousand total crew hours of working on forest management tasks. That's specifically thinning efforts on projects across the system. We've applied at this point for about two hundred and nine thousand dollars in grant funding. I was hoping to be able to tell you that we've gotten this so far, but those grants will come in about January, February. So fingers crossed that a lot of that will come in, but that'll put us close to about a million dollars in grant funding in the past ten or so years for forestry-related projects. So we've been continuing to be successful in in grant funding for for this these operations.
Chris, what do you where are you targeting the requests?
On the groundwork?
Yeah. Right, for the money.
Who are we asking? Okay, so the primary ones lately have been furworm, which is the forest restoration wildfire mitigation grant. A couple of others, yeah, which is a state funding. So that's in the that's coming from the state legislative adaptations in the past two or three years. And then we've also got some federal funding from the state Fire Assistance Program, SFA. And that one's more competitive, but we've been pretty successful on that. That's the next project I'll talk about, has gotten some money for that.
Both state and federal.
Both state and federal, yeah. We've sampled over a hundred over-story inventory plots in twenty twenty-two and twenty-five under-story sites. So these, again, really lent to that adaptive management of, are we meeting our goals? How is the forest changing? What do we need to be concerned about as far as forest conditions across open space mountain parks? And then utilized over fifteen hundred hours of junior ranger time, volunteer time, ready to work. Again, looking for those opportunities to just increase the the person power on the ground. And, you know, believe it or not, people love to get out and run stuff through the chippers. So it it's been a great opportunity to to get some more work done out there and take some of the load off the off the crew. And then, you know, a a pretty unique opportunity within the forest management program is our ability to send resources out to national fire assignments, which both kind of puts money in the in the crew's pocket, but also increases our ability and our training within the department as far as, you know, increasing our ability to to respond to fires on our system. So eight different fire assignments, national fire assignments in six different states. So we're sending people all over the country, which is a a pretty unique opportunity. So the project I want to highlight for forestry was is has been kind of a unique opportunity to collaborate with the Shetahqua Association in twenty twenty-two. This was a grant, one of those state grants that we applied for with Shetahqua. It was a joint effort. We got about forty-two thousand dollars in funding to do twenty acres on the open space side and address, you know, defensible space within the Shetahqua Association. Basically split the grant. We got a portion of it to do our work. They got a portion of it to do their work. And you can see the results. That's the Blue Bell Road on the left. The treated area that we addressed about, it ended up being about twenty-one acres that was thinned on open space. And then a recent photo that we took where they've reduced the fuel loads right around the perimeter of Shetahqua. So kind of a win-win for both, you know, kind of the the larger landscape look at fire fuels, fire and fuels reduction and the risk reduction on our side of the fence, as well as an opportunity for them to do some work. And they've, you know, if you've seen it in the, I think it was in the paper recently, that they've gotten some additional significant funding to do, continue the work on on the Shetahqua side of the fence. So we were able to also supplement some of the work that we did in Chana Mesa. All the polygons you see in the bottom right of the map in orange were about a hundred and thirty acres that we did this year to build on to that Blue Bell project. Also funded, those were federal funds. So we got about a hundred and thirty acres done at more or less half the price to open space mountain parks. More than half of that that work was was funded by by grant dollars.
And the area that's shown in the left picture is what color?
That's the red area.
That's what I thought. Thanks.
All right, so next one. So finally, the Ecological Restoration Group. Like I said, small but mighty, they had two temporary crew members from March through December. They were a little bit challenged by COVID hiring and and some of that, you know, they got they got folks on and then had folks leave and ended up with Shelby and Eddie that that did a fantastic job and worked with Kevin and Megan to get a ton of work done. Again, they were they were able to take advantage of volunteers and ready to work and over a thousand hours worked with with our volunteer resources on a variety of projects. That's Eddie in the picture planting a cottonwood grove. That's the over fifteen hundred wetland plants, and they were able to get in the ground. They also do kind of a a unique mix of things, you know, everything from planting plants to collecting seeds, monitoring U-Ladies dresses, one of our federally listed species. They they were able to cover about a hundred acres and and found about seven hundred and twenty plants in in those areas that we that we regular regularly review. So again, th- these guys do work across the department and even across the city. So they're working with veg management, forestry, our ag groups, trails, real estate, wetlands, public works, utilities, you name it. They they either consult or provide resources or, you know, directly work with virtually every group within open space mountain parks. So the the project I wanted to highlight for ecological restoration is a little bit different. You know, there there isn't a map for this one, but they work closely with Lynn Riedel and our Grassland Ecology Program on this native seed collection and and increase program. This is really an opportunity to collect native plant material across the system. It's really important for, as part of our restoration efforts, to maintain that local genotype and and have native plant resources available that we're not, you know, importing in from Kansas or Oregon or, you know, other parts of the country that we can use these resources within our our ecological restoration projects. In twenty twenty-two, they collected about fifteen different species, using, again, volunteers. That's an ongoing theme. Like I said, those force multipliers wherever we can. About ten volunteer projects, over six hundred and fifty hours working with volunteers on on seed collections and just getting folks out there picking plants and, you know, collecting the seed. At this point, we have nearly sixty different grass-informed species within our arsenal of 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 seeds collected. That picture at the bottom right is our seed storage facility, which lives at the Ranger Ranger HQ on a cherryville. It it's more or less a glorified refrigerator, but it's a pretty unique opportunity for us to be able to store this stuff and maintain it long term. And then we were able to provide seed mixes for more than twenty open space projects. And something you'll see in the twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three focus as well, but really looking at expanding our options for growing out these plants and and native seeds. It's great to collect it and put it in a bag and have it ready, but it's even better if we can take it and plant it somewhere and grow it out and multiply it. So we've been working with a lot of our our ag tenants on identifying areas where we can plant it, grow it out, and then recollect it and and again, just exponentially grow grow these resources. So for twenty twenty-three, a lot of this is is gonna continue. You know, the listed species are gonna continue to be an issue. They're they're not going away, unfortunately. So, you know, a a good portion of the crew's time is gonna be out there pulling weeds, and it'll always continue to be a focus. Tall oak grass is gonna continue. We've really worked towards both expanding within our properties, but something that we're pretty excited about is working with N-Car, which is, again, just north of where the, you know, the kind of the densest spots of it are. So looking at hopefully establishing some permanent fencing in there and getting some cattle in there, hopefully in twenty twenty-three. So working through that. And then something that's that's pretty cool that that Kelly has really been working on is getting. And then something that's, that's pretty cool that Kelly has really been working on is getting tall grass listed on the state weed list. So it will in 2023 be on the list. It'll be watchlisted, but that does give us the opportunity to apply for grants and, you know, kind of continue to, to work towards it being a statewide focus. So that's, that's definitely been important work. And then, like I said, the mapping continues to be a focus and something we hope to really ramp up. Focusing in Lippincott, Downey Draw, Flanders Vista, South Basin Trail. A lot of those areas haven't been mapped since 2005, 2007. So really getting around to reevaluating those areas. And then those collaborative efforts are going to continue, ready to work, Department of Ag. Really taking advantage of some of these neighborhood volunteer groups that are, are willing to work and happy to go gangbusters on some of these, these species. So continuing to tap into those, those work groups that are out there.
Are those little people or is Lindsay Pond really that deep?
They're very little people. No.
They're gangbusters.
It's, it's a pretty deep, pretty deep pond.
I had no idea.
Yeah, yeah.
So Chris, did any of the tall grass areas get burned?
They did, yes.
Yeah, we seen, you know, kind of the effect of fire and spin on.
We have monitoring in there that we will get back to. I think initially and anecdotally, we've seen some impact, but it, it'll show up in our monitoring.
Great.
Yeah. All right, so next one, Forest Management. Like the weeds, the trees continue to keep growing and our fire risk is still out there. So we will really focusing on thinning efforts in 2023. A number of project areas, Namini Hill, Shanhead Ridge, Fysen Drive, Casa Reservoir, we're working with utilities on doing some work. I recently found out about a third of our drinking water goes through Casa Reservoir and down to Bataso. So that'll be a project area that was in that two hundred and nine thousand, two hundred and nine thousand grant ask. So another kind of collaborative effort. We will be working on a update to our community wildfire protection plan, which if you've been reading the papers, CWPPs are all in the news and everybody's going to be working on updating their CWPP. So this will be a unique opportunity to pull a lot of resources within the city together to kind of talk about where is our risk and how do we address it going forward? We do have a community wildfire protection plan. It was developed in 2007, so it's well beyond its, its lifespan and kind of outside our ability to ask for grants against it. So that'd be an important update. Evaluating and integrating smaller fire mitigation requests and projects. This is a project that really came out of Marshall and N. Car. You know, it, it took some fires to get people thinking and looking at fuels in their backyards and across our fence. So, you know, I think throughout the, the spring and summer, I probably got two or three calls a week about, what are you doing about this area? So we developed a tracking system and a map internally that I could drop some pins and keep track of all those CRMs and, and public input that comes in. So those are going to be areas that we both evaluate and incorporate into, to work plans going forward, so. Goes along with the next one, potential capacity building through additional staffing and equipment. You all know that we got some city taxes approved that address wildfire mitigation as well as countywide taxes approved. So we're anticipating some additional funding, how that gets allocated and spent is still sort of in the works. And we're working through priority setting as part of our kind of internal conversations. But, you know, we're really working on, okay, how do we ramp up work on the ground? We've, you know, we've continued to do that over the past three or four years, but this is going to be an opportunity to, to even continue that through equipment, staffing, a variety of things. Our ongoing monitoring is going to continue, looking at, at our impacts and overstore and understore. And then, again, kind of collaborative efforts are important here too. Boulder County Fire Shed is, is something that we've been a part of. The CU Centers for Sustainable Landscape and Communities Fire Protection Districts. Like, we will be updating our CWPP, the Boulder County wide CWPP process will be kicking off this year. So again, an opportunity to work collaboratively across fence lines. And then the Shadow Canyon is kind of trimmed off here, but the Shadow Canyon Hand Crew is how we get our fire resources out on national callouts. This is a countywide hand crew that, that we contribute to. So a unique opportunity to get, get resources out there. And then finally, our Ecological Restoration Group. Again, continuation is lots of projects that are ongoing, particularly along Boulder and South Boulder Creeks. Integrating ecological restoration efforts into some of our ongoing trail ISP projects, Gephardt, South Basin Trail, Gun Barrel, contributing to a lot of those efforts. Undesignated trail projects really providing input on, on where and when and how to do those projects. I mentioned that the seed grow outs, we're, we're working with three different ag tenants in 2023 to, to expand those and, you know, get the square footage in, in some of those ag lands to, to grow some of these seed, seed species.
And are these plots of land that you just seed with the native seeds that you have? Are they with other vegetation or?
Yes, all of the above, yeah, yeah. Looking for ways to, to figure out the best ways to, you know, plant it and get it in the ground, but then harvest it as well, so. And then, again, continue collaboration, volunteers, ready to work, Southern Rocky Seed Network, which is a broader effort to conserve some of those seed resources. Boulder County Parks and Open Space, and then Cool Boulder Climate Initiatives. We provided seed and plant material to a couple of their projects this year. So, again, ways to kind of look for opportunities to, to expand broader, broader across the city. So that was a very quick rundown of a whole lot of stuff. But, you know, just, just a quick touch on a lot of things that are going on out there. This is our, our vet management crew and our restoration crew after a long day of work. Still, still looking excited and.
White can still look white at the end of the day.
That's a good sign, right?
Can you say just a little bit about where you use the seeds? I mean, there were some places that were obvious, like getting rid of undesignated trails and those kinds of little fixes and recovery areas. Are there other larger areas where you use the seeds?
Along the line, I was going to ask, we heard about, you know, bird dog.
Yeah.
Situation last night. Are we providing natives seeds for reseeding, you know, relocation areas and things like that?
We are, yeah. In some cases, those are a mix of both kind of locally collected as well as some commercial seed just because of the size and the need for, you know, significant amount of volume. But as far as other projects go, we started collecting a lot of wetland species now. So incorporating them into like Sabrero Marsh and Cottonwood Grove and some of those wetland projects.
About the sires, any used in N. Car?
No, we really didn't identify a need for a whole lot of seeding in those areas. You know, for Marshall, it was such a quick burn that, you know, it was going to recover relatively quickly on its own without a whole lot of help. Similar in N. Car, I think, you know, we've used them in forestry projects where, you know, the disturbance was, you know, kind of localized to either access roads or decking piles or some of those areas. So those are some examples of, of places where we've utilized.
And, and how does work, for instance, with N. Car, end up with a pay arrangement? Or are you just contributing knowledge and staff and work on their property or what?
Some of that's still to be determined. I think we're updating our MOU that's, you know, between open space and N. Car. We have some existing management rights on N. Car, but, you know, it's not very well defined. I think we may kind of incorporate some of the fencing costs on our end and then work with some of our leases to get the cattle in there. But again, it's, it kind of meets multiple objectives as far as, you know, addressing.
Neighbor, yeah.
Yeah, being, being a good neighbor and, and, you know, kind of the, the fuel benefits, but also the, the ecological benefits of addressing the, you know, that looming.
Right.
Patch of tall grass that's just across the fence.
And a great fuel.
And a very good fuel.
You mentioned that you count, are counting less and less weeds or pulling less and less weeds.
Right.
In the same area or in a smaller area? I mean, does the area stay the same and the number of weeds go down or what's the?
Yeah, that's a good question. It, it kind of varies by species. So like for Mediterranean sage, which we've been treating for twenty plus years. Same area, fewer individual species.
Wow.
Yeah, yeah, significantly, significantly, yeah. Something like hairy willow herb is one that tends to be trimming up a little bit, but I think it's because in, both we've been sort of looking for it more and it's one that tends to focus on wetter areas. So, you know, it, it's kind of up and down depending on what species it is, but in general, similar areas, fewer plants.
Teasel?
Teasel. That one, that one's kind of an ongoing, yeah. It is a tough one, yeah.
But it appears like there's progress along South Boulder Creek.
Yeah, yeah, I think we've definitely made progress in key areas like that where it's, it's just an ongoing, you know, ongoing battle, but.
But what they say is after so many years, you'll start seeing less.
Right.
And the question is, do you?
Yes, yeah. And I think, I think that plays out in, in kind of our management hours, you know. So we're, we're, we continue going back to the same places, but we spend less time in those areas, which allows us to get more areas done.
Any other questions, John? From up there?
No, I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Caroline? I don't have any. Thank you for the presentation.
Just a, Chris, you'll probably be back in some capacity, but in February, Brian Anaker is going to be talking about our new science and climate resilience program area reports to the director, at the director's team level. And as part of that, wildland fire, wildfire will be a, a focus area for that new program. And of course, Chris is heavily involved in developing that program area as well as Burton and Jeff and others. And so we're going to come and give you a sneak peek into that new program area and talk about wildfire some more in February, so. All right, Karen, our last item is just director updates. And I've got one verbal update, which is a little bit of sad news for the department and good news for an individual. John Potter, who has been our resource and stewardship deputy director. And he came to the department seven years ago this month. And from a lot of great experience he had in Oregon. Well, he's accepted the city manager position for Brattleboro, Vermont. And not only is that good news from John and a little disappointing news for us, but the fact that his start date is December 30th in Vermont puts us on a big, bit of a fast track for what a transition looks like for us in that regard. So this is the meeting to announce John's departure and to thank him for his years of service and things that come to my mind of what he came to the department with. A lot of experiences is on the asset management front. And for us to begin to challenge us to be looking not only what we want to do next year and what, how we should look at our asset classes in a year from now, but what are the priorities four, five, six years from now? And he was very instrumental in, in building our, getting us to dedicate the resources to build out Beehive to start to do inventories on our asset classes and then to put the resources towards the maintenance and the restoration and in some cases of our assets. Work planning is another area, if you could have seen in 2015, our version of a work plan. It was a big Excel spreadsheet that we could probably lay out from here all the way to Janelle down at that table. Well, that was transitioned into a software system. And again, John was at the forefront of working with several of us and developing a great, robust work plan that we're now have pretty good confidence in what we are going to be doing two or three years from now from an annual work planning perspective. So, and obviously, project management, John is very skilled at project management. He, he just doesn't get flustered. It's like you, like he took on wildland fire for the past eighteen months and just went gangbusters with on it. He was our main liaison and, and working with the utility staff along with Don in South Boulder Creek, a very complex project. So he was, he was a go-to person for a number of different areas for us and he'll be sorely missed. And this will be my opportunity in front of the cameras, in front of the trustees, to thank John for his years of service and wish him well out in snowy Vermont, where I guess after winter they have mud season and then I think they have a one-month summer season and it's back to mud season, winter, so. So I know he's listening and so just.
It's been great working with him.
He's listening. Thank you, John.
So I was just going to ask Dan, like on CU South, you know, he has been a real key, you know, player at the open space department. You have any ideas about kind of successors or?
Yeah, I think the focus for us is shifting a little bit more in the mitigation front. And so that means I think Don D'Amico is going to be playing a larger, a larger role for the department. I will step up and play a larger role, so Don and I will definitely be closer partners on that realm. And then, of course, we will have a successor for John. But I think when we start to talk about mitigate, mitigating impacts, restoration, you know, we're going to be leaning, leaning heavily on Don and, and maybe some of the restoration crews and things like that. So, for instance, some of that will, you'll start to see some of that transition even in January. We're going to come back and report on mitigation and some initial plans. And Don will be very involved in that presentation. So kind of transitioning a little way from John and into, into Don. And, and of course, I'll play a, probably a bigger role this year than I've played in the past.
And do you know yet whether there will be an interim?
Yes, so based on the nature of the timing with the holidays and all of that and, and if we're wanting to do a thorough search, a robust search, we will be looking for an interim. And I, as I am posting the position, I'm estimating from anywhere from three to six months, having an interim before we're able to get somebody permanently in that place. So I'll keep you up to date.
Great.
Thank you. Anything else from anybody that I've forgotten or would like to say something? Okay, thank you very much to everybody.